Five thirty for the Select Board's meeting. This meeting is being recorded by Marshall Community Media. Is there anybody else in the room that has recorded this meeting? I see none. Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberate, and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. There's going to be a couple of items changed on here. The executive session will be held at the end. And then there'll be some action items that'll be taken up towards the end, moved around, taken at the end as well. Charles, do you have anything for the Administrator Report?
Just a few items, if I could, Mr. Chair.
Absolutely.
So it's like my fifth day on the job. I'm starting to know a few names and learn my way around Town Hall. I haven't been out of Town Hall yet. So a couple of things, in case people are asking, I do intend to have a Department Head meeting soon. I wanted to sort of understand some of the issues before I did that. But if anybody is asking, it's my intention to do that relatively soon. A few things that I've been working on this past week with several of the team members is the procurement issues that the town is dealing with. You've hired a new contractual employee to review all of your procurement processes and regulations. We had a preliminary meeting today on that this morning. And we're going to be developing a host, a suite, of documents that are going to be available to Department Heads. Because in Massachusetts, there's a lot of layers. And there's different pathways for different procurements. And, you know, it's really important, for a number of reasons legally, for the town to adhere to all of these procurement laws. So anyway, we're going to unveil that suite of procedures in the next week or so. Same thing, we'll set up a meeting with Department Heads and key personnel to train them on those processes. So that's really in good shape. I did get an email last week. There's a firm, NexGrid, that has a contract with the town for solar at the landfill. So we had a preliminary meeting with them last week, with Town Council and with Meg, your Town Accountant. And I just wanted to let you know, I'm working with them to take a look at a number of issues. In the end, anything that we work on will, of course, come back to the Select Board. But if you hear anything about it, I am working away on that little project. Then, oh, I should have mentioned this first. Michelle Coyle is in the back of the room. And Michelle is new in the Select Board office. She came here from Millboro and just wanted to welcome her board and thank her. I have seniority over Michelle. And Ashley has seniority over me. So we're all new, so you have to be patient with us.
Doesn't work.
That's on purpose.
During this process. I think, and we did get an email. I sent it out to the Select Board today on the Seaport Economic Council Grant. You had appropriated money at the Fall Town Meeting to pay for the town's share of the dredging project on North River. And that grant came through. So those monies were appropriated from free cash, so we won't have to use those. So anyway, that's all I have for now. Thank you very much.
I appreciate it. Do we have any public comments? Ashley, can you?
I don't, yes.
Ashley, can you grab the other page from the laptop there?
The pen doesn't work. Throw it away, whatever. Mr. Steve Lynch, so this is going to be a little fragmented because it's hard off the press. I just wrote it, so I didn't get to rehearse it yet. So, but, so give me a little break on it.
Are you saying you need more than two minutes, Steve?
Like, two minutes and ten seconds.
All right, that's all you get.
All right, two minutes and twenty seconds, Trish.
Okay.
All right, so I'm here to talk about the school roof funding, how we're going to pay for it. So everyone wants the school roof to be repaired. And we all want the state to fund half of it through the Mass School Building Authority, known as the MSBA Grant Program. The school department says that we need a commitment to keep us at the top of the grant list. They want the Select Board to vote to schedule a special election for a tax override to fund it. However, an override election does not guarantee a commitment to the MSBA. What if it fails, just like the last override did? What we should do is hold another special town meeting with a different funding source. If I was a Select Board member, I would suggest writing an article to bond the roof project, pay it back from the general fund, make it a line item budget expense each year until the loan is paid off. If the Select Board calls for a special town meeting avoiding an override election, it will confirm the funding and expedite our commitment to the MSBA. We can move forward with the project without putting any extra tax burden on the residents of Mossfield. In the past few years, we have had five to six million in free cash. The town has sufficient money in the general fund to pay for our share without an override. Any additional tax levy, in addition, our tax levy increases at least three percent each year, and that's without an override. Calling another special town meeting is clearly the quickest and most logical way to get the school roof fixed without overtaxing homeowners and containing the path to an unsustainable budget. So just let me say this again. We can confirm to the MSBA we have our share of the funding by holding a special town meeting rather than a special election, which we don't know the outcome of. Tonight's vote is a defining moment for you on the Board of Selectmen. I have said it before, and I will say it again, Marshall does not have a revenue problem. What we have is a spending problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. How long was that, Trish?
Fifteen minutes. Like, you had fifteen more seconds.
Oh, really? So I did in two minutes?
Thank you. All right, so we have appointments for six o'clock with the Historical Commission, six fifteen with the Board of Assessors. That's a classification hearing, so that must take place at six fifteen. Six thirty, and at six fifty, there'll be interviews between two Labor Councils. So we'll move on to some action items to take up, up until those time slots come up. So discussion and vote on request permission to accept donation, council on aging. So we have a donation, the sum of $200, from Arlene Marchant for the Council on Aging. So Steve, did you have any comments or questions on it?
No, thank you.
Trish?
No, thanks.
Okay. So the motion will be, I move that the Board vote to accept with gratitude the donation of the sum of $200 on behalf of the Council of Agents from Arlene Marchant. Do I have a second?
Second.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, discussion and vote to declare two vehicles a surplus from the Police Department. So I guess there's a 2016 Ford pickup with 130,000 miles on it and a 2017 Dodge van with 90,000 miles. Both vehicles need major repair, and the DPW recommends to get rid of them. The van is valued at 1,500, and the pickup is valued at 2,200. We would like to trade these in. Can you advise? So, Charles, do you have any more information on this? Do you have any input on it?
The only thing, I did talk to the chief today about it. And as you can see from, I think, that message, the Maintenance Department is recommending that these vehicles be surplused. And so really, then, it's not worth making a major investment in maintaining their, in these two pieces of equipment.
So if we were to trade them in, or somewhere along those similar lines, they would be sold, what happens with that money?
So, two things. I mean, if they're, you know, I'm not sure of your practice, frankly, but if they're traded in, they'll go to reduce the cost of a new piece, a new vehicle. If you sell them through, you know, municipal sale, those monies would go into the general fund.
Okay. I appreciate that. Any comments or questions, Steve?
Yeah, I spoke to the chief earlier. The rough value of each is like $1,500. So, you know, to Charles's point, it's really not worth making an investment in, so it's kind of a simple surplus action item.
Yeah, that's what I was figuring. I was looking at it, and I'm like, well, can we use this in town for any of the employees that need it? But from the sounds of it, they would need extensive repair and all that, so might as well just be done with it and let it be somebody else's problem. Trish, you have any comments or questions?
No.
All right. So I move that the Board vote to declare the two police vehicles identified by the Marshall Police Department, a Ford 2016 pickup and a 2017 Dodge van, as surplus property and authorize the Police Department to dispose of them in compliance with Mass General Laws Chapter 30B. Do I have a second?
Second.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Excuse me, Trish. Let's see here. Discussion and vote on proposed ballot question in establishment of election date for Martinson's school roof. So this is going to be something that Steve touched upon, it's probably going to be a sensitive subject for a few people as we take this up. Do you have something to say?
Well, what I was going to suggest is I know the school department will be here because they know the program through the state better.
So are they supposed to come in for this meeting?
Yeah, they're going to come in.
So should we just hold off on it?
If we can hold in that until everybody gets here, they'll also have their owner, project manager available online as well.
Do we know what time they're showing up at?
I think we suggested closer to after the interviews for the Labor Council.
All right. Okay, number six, discussion and vote on Town Council's proposed policy for review by Select Board of proposed town meeting articles. Bob, do you want to give a preview to this?
Sure, I'd be happy to. So, following the discussion at the last Select Board meeting, I was charged with drafting a policy for you to review town meeting articles. It has been, at times, past practice, but we also know that it's not been adhered to. So rather than having any misunderstanding going forward, if you adopt this policy, which basically says, at the next Select Board meeting after the close of the warrant, whether it's the annual town meeting warrant or a special town meeting warrant, the Selectmen will add to the agenda the discussion of whatever articles have been submitted so that you all can form an opinion as to what articles should be added to the annual or special town meeting warrant. It's a pretty simple policy. The only thing that you absolutely can't have any control over is whether you add citizens' petition articles. So I've excluded that as an article that you could exclude. As a practical matter, there are other elected boards, and they may offer articles, so you may never exercise your discretion, but this gives you the ability to determine that. Instead of voting on town meeting articles right before town meeting, you're in at the beginning, and you're deciding what the Selectment's warrant, and it is a Selectment's warrant, will contain.
So you're saying the policies for the Select, so is this something that the Select Board, I mean, will take up the vote on, but is this something that we'll go, that we should put forward at town meeting, or how should we operate on this?
No, you can actually, you have some policies that exist, like, for example, now we have public comment, and from time to time, you might adjust that. But this would just go into our book of policies, and it would be, in force and effect, as guidance for your Board and for any successor boards.
I get that, but the whole thing is that, I do believe we have, in our bylaws, that kind of outline the stuff as well, right?
You could also make this a general bylaw, if you wanted to do that.
See, that's what I'm thinking, is we already have something in the bylaw in regards to special town meeting articles, which I believe they say it only should be used for emergencies, if I'm correct.
Yeah, we have capital budget bylaws that preclude you from, well, the bylaw says you're not supposed to add anything to the special town meeting warrants for capital expenditures unless it's of an emergency nature.
I think it's the same way for town articles, right? As well, there should be emergency for special town meetings?
Generally speaking, zoning articles should be at the annual town meeting, except those that possibly can't wait. So town meeting in the fall should really be for emergency items and things that just absolutely can't wait till the spring.
See, that's what I'm looking to tighten up. So, I mean, the policy, policy written-
You can enforce that, you can enforce that by adopting this policy and reminding people that you're not going to accept articles that are not an emergency or that are absolutely necessary. So just adhere to the policy and exercise your discretion.
Well, my, I get that. We could set a policy.
Yeah.
But the whole thing is that, I'm just looking at that going forward, should this be something that the town should adopt as well as a bylaw in regards to what-
Well, let me make a suggestion. Why don't you adopt it as a policy now? And if you want me to frame it as a bylaw, I'll give it to you as a proposed bylaw, and you can put it on the annual warrant.
All right. Well, I mean, I definitely want to hear from Steve and Trish on it, and see what their thoughts are on it.
I agree.
So Steve, do you have any comments or questions in regards to the policy that Bob has put forward, and what I was thinking in regards to maybe making it a general bylaw?
I mean, I'm definitely in favor of all the relevant boards and committees getting together further in advance to make sure that we're dotting all the i's and crossing all the t's, and we're kind of on the same page. You know, I want to make sure that, you know, independently elected boards still have the right to put their proposed articles on the warrant, but, you know, I agree that we need to be consistent, that anything that's of an emergency or special nature should be the only thing on a special town meeting warrant. So, you know, I do think we should have the ability to enforce that. So I'm fine with adopting that as our policy. If you want to draft a bylaw, I would be fine with having that as a discussion to review the specific language at a future meeting. But I, you know, I'm in favor of the spirit of reviewing the warrant much further in advance with every stakeholder in town government, to make sure that it's a much smoother process.
Yeah, absolutely. I totally agree with that. Trish?
Yeah, I feel the same way. Exactly the same.
Okay. So, all right, so everybody here seems to be comfortable with the policy for the moment. And then, I guess, Charles, could you put down for future discussion in regards to maybe, for discussion of writing it up for possible general bylaw? So, I move that the Board vote to approve the proposed policy submitted by Town Council. Proposed policy as a meant establishing a review and approval process for the proposed annual and special town meeting warrant articles. Do I have a second?
Second.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, discussion and vote on Jack Griffin's proposed bylaw amendment, a proposed amendment by Town Council. So, is Jack here?
I think he's on there.
Yeah, I am here.
Oh, you're on Zoom? Okay, Jack. So Jack, do you want to give everybody listening your overview in regards to why you forwarded this amendment?
Basically, I forwarded it because of the timing of various projects that hit capital budget where we're forced at the last minute to make a decision where, for instance, the school roof needed to be done, and they already had steps ahead where the approval was needed. If we didn't approve it, then they probably wouldn't have got the match. And I want to avoid that in the future. That's basically what it comes down to.
All right, I think you did a phenomenal job writing this up, in my opinion. I do have a question. So I guess, as well as getting a call from Bob, so Jack has estimated a cost exceeding $1 million. And we have a bylaw, I believe, that says $25,000 or more. So is what Jack here going to undermine the capital project defined effect of the section 95-12 of our bylaws? How is this all going to work?
I didn't view it that way. I thought Jack's looking to have involvement in an earlier, in a different way than what we have in the current framework. I think a lot, as I put in the memorandum to the Select Board, which I shared with Mr. Griffin, I think a lot of it stems from the fact that we've got away with complying with our capital budget bylaw. And I think if we follow the capital budget bylaw, 99% of the problems go away. But I thought the essence of what Jack might be trying to capture is getting earlier involvement by the capital, you know, Budget Committee into large expenditures. So that before we went out and asked for grants and started designing things and doing feasibility studies, the Capital Budget Committee was brought into the loop on this as another, you know, they have expertise in capital budget projects or capital projects, you know, and he actually wanted the Advisory Board involved in, you know, they're another, supposed to be an independent voice on whether something is in the best interest of the town. So what I did is I took what Jack said, and I tried to craft a proposal that would complement what we have and bring those two boards in to the current scheme. And I don't think Jack's article waters down what we have. I think if we take the most important part of what Jack was offering, I think it actually helps us. So I drafted a proposed bylaw, and it's at the very end of my memo, section 9520, which would be a supplement to what we already have. And it says, at least six months before any capital project with a projected cost of a million is submitted to preliminary schematic design or other type of funding requests that the Board or committee of department that's involved in that type of a project has to come in and submit it to the Capital Budget Committee and the Advisory Board, it's up to you all, to decide for review and provision of written feedback and recommendations. And they're actually just advising you all. And I think that's complimentary and not in contravention of what we have. And I do think that the major problem that we've had is that we're not following that capital budget process.
Okay, so this, so the proposed bylaw is not going to blunt out section 95-12 in our bylaws?
No, I drafted it as a supplemental provision, not to contradict what we already have.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure of. And Jack, what was the, what was your thoughts in just making it a million? Should it be less than a million? Or, you know, what was your thought process in putting $1 million as the amount?
I think the million-dollar mark was something that I just started with. I believe that, you know, anything that's going to be bonded is probably going to be a million-dollar project. And anything under it may not be. But I just started with that figure. I mean, it could be adjusted, but I wouldn't go any higher, I would go lower. But I was, I just picked the million because I thought that would make it important.
What do you think, Bob? Do you think a million's a good number, or do you think we should?
I thought it was a fair number. You know, obviously, if we're going to look to spend $1 million on something, it's a fairly major project, and that might justify the early intervention.
And then the timeframe, six months is good?
Yeah. I mean, we already have existing regular projects, $25,000 or more.
Yep.
You know, we have, you've got to submit them by the third week in November so that we can include them in the annual budget planning. That's about six months already. But this is major projects, and it's before we even get to the design stage. We get everybody in, we have a conversation, the capital budget gives us opinions, and the Advisory Board gives us opinions, and then you all decide whether we're going forward with it. And I think it's a, I think it's a good idea. I don't think it would, I don't think it would delay the process. I think it just brings more people into the fold and get them on the same page.
I do have a question in regards to section 94-14 of the Capital Project Fund. It's one thing I brought up in regards to, we should have a fund so we could put money into our future capital projects. So is this, is this fund similar to what I'm talking about, or is this something completely different, where it's a fund that you put money into for approved projects, and then you, then you take the money from it to pay for it?
Well, we already have this fund. I don't know what the balance of the fund is, but I don't think it's utilized to the extent that it could be or should be.
It's not. It needs to be used, and nobody's using it at all. And what it is, is the leftover finances on projects. So if a project was 15 million dollars and it was 14 million dollars, the final cost, a million would go into the Capital Project Fund. But none of that is doing, working right now. And also, I, go ahead, Bob.
What I've seen happen at a couple of town meetings is when we come in under budget and we have extra money, I have seen articles in the past where we transfer that to other capital projects. But I don't think it's been following the process that Jack has been involved in. It's just, it gets grabbed without going into this Capital Project Fund. So, and then other, other times, what we do is we, we provide an emotion that if we have any money that we save, we use it to pay down the balance of the loan. So it's being diverted away from the Capital Project Fund that I think Jack is interested in. Sometimes it's going towards other capital projects. And I've seen, just over the years, some mention of Bond Council approving the expenditure of those funds. And then on other occasions, we're using any unexpendited fund and we're paying down the debt service. So, but I think Jack is right. I mean, we set this up, and it could, and maybe should receive some of this money.
Well, what the decision-making process is being done at the department level, whereas if that money came back and went into this project fund, capital budget project fund, it would accumulate. And when that accumulates, you make the decision. So they may be deciding to take some of this money to put for a car or here or there, but there might be a project like the school roof that needs the money first. And that's why I want to go in that direction.
Any more to add, Bob? You good?
No, I agree with Jack.
Okay. I know we're running up to the time here for six o'clock. Steve, did you have anything to add or comment on?
Yeah, I think the issue is just that the bylaws that currently exist isn't being followed. So I mentioned this at our last meeting, it's a good time to reiterate, anyone who's tuning in, by the third Friday in November for next year's fiscal budget, you need to get any capital project requests into the Capital Budget Committee. And that's for anything above $25,000. So I think a lot of this is covered by the current bylaw, it just needs to be followed and adhered to. So, you know, I can see why Jack was in a tough position, right? Because he was appointed to capital budget August 22nd. So, you know, with this update or not, there wasn't really the ability for him to review the school roof in advance, again, because, you know, he was appointed August 22nd. But I think the bylaw as currently written, you know, as Bob said, you know, covers 99% of the problems. So, again, I just want to underscore that folks have until the third Friday of November to get their capital requests in for next year's fiscal budget. So the only question I had for Bob is, you know, in terms of looking at this amendment, is there anything that wouldn't be obvious at first glance that could have a practical effect or implication in terms of delaying or slowing anything down?
I don't think so, because I think if we adopted the amendment at town meeting and we follow this process, or it was taking too long, your Board can still say, okay, we've had enough time and we're moving ahead. Because it's still advisory to you all.
Okay, that makes sense. Did you have anything you wanted to add, Charles?
Yeah, I was just going to make that very comment. The other thing I was thinking about is, the other thing is, part of your budget planning exercise, once you realize you have X project, let's say, three years down the road, and you want to strive towards reserving funds- and you wanna strive towards reserving funds, you could almost have like a stabilization fund for the capital project fund. You could say, geez, this is something that we try to finance without a debt exclusion, for example. And you could plan in advance, and when the capital planning committee develops their plan, you could take a look at some of these projects and say, we're gonna start reserving some of our revenues for this project. And that'll, that'll cushion the impact on taxpayers down the road. So that's another strategy you might wanna start to think about using.
So what you're saying is the section 95-14 capital project fund, that is not a fund to store money, and that is just money to, I think, for approved town meeting articles?
Yeah.
Put that money into withdrawal out of, or that you understand?
But I'm thinking you could also maybe modify that a little bit, so you are appropriating money in advance to this capital fund for future projects.
All right, so what you're saying is that we could, in regards to what I brought up in our discussions, in regards to a fund, we can modify the language on this?
Yeah, I could talk to Meg about that and see if there's a mechanism to do that. But it just might be a good strategy, and it's a good faith issue with your taxpayers as well.
Is Meg on Zoom by chance?
She'll, she'll be up for the meeting.
All right. Trish, do you have anything to add?
Well, we've talked about the stabilization fund a couple of times, and I think it sounds like a really good idea. And also, I like the idea that Bob brought up paying off debt with extra money, you know, I mean, it's just kind of a win-win there.
No, absolutely. I mean, I think with this upcoming budget process, I think we all have to sit down and figure out what we're gonna do and what money we have to spend and everything. This is, I think this is gonna be a big year for all of us in making decisions, and some of them could be hard and may not make everybody happy. But I think going forward, what we do now, and going forward, hopefully put the town on the right course over the years and everything like that. So, Meg, did you wanna, we're just discussing the, Jack Griffin's proposed town article, but we're discussing the capital, capital project fund on section 95-14. Is that fund just to hold money from town meeting approved articles and then gets expended from there, or is that, is that an account you could put money towards?
I mean, there are multiple ways you could deal with it, but mainly you would be putting funding in there, but there are different models for it. But essentially, it's going to be a place where you would probably put free cash when you had the availability, and it sits there and it's available for like emergency-type situations.
So, I guess you can expend from an emergency basis outside of what was there approved for, but if we wanted to look to stop putting money into safer future projects, we'd have to modify the language or do something different in regards to a fund?
Yeah, so what we wanna do is probably have, like, go to town meeting and request to create a stabilization fund for capital.
All right. Charlie, can you put that down for the next meeting to draft up an article for town meeting for the select board to review and approve for the next town meeting on that? Okay. So is that anything you got, Steve?
No, thank you. Oh, good.
Trish?
I'm good.
All right. So, I move that the board vote to approve a proposed general bylaw amendment to the town's capital budget bylaw submitted by town council, proposed policy as amended and to insert the same in the spring ATM annual town meeting warrant. Do I have a second?
Second.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. All right. Cindy, I know I'm three minutes into your, your thing here, and I apologize.
It's okay.
So if you can give us a rundown in regards to what you're looking at for 910 Collin Lane?
So for 910 Collin Lane, I've given you a summary given to us by Amy Vois of the House. The gentleman from Equitable Development let us walk through the House, and she came with us and wrote up a summary of the House, as well as I gave you some information on the archaeological dig that happened when the airport went through its expansion. So the historical commission would love to see a small dig be done on the property. We'd like to apply for CPC funds for next year.
Can you pull that microphone closer to you?
Sure.
Thank you.
Like to apply for some CPC funds for next year to do a small dig on the property. But mainly, we would like to see a family move into the house. We would love to see this property stay as opposed to being demolished.
And you think the property is suitable enough for somebody to live in?
Yes, the last time we looked at it, which was in 2023, it was. It's been closed for two years, so we should have the heating and electrical checked and things like that, the water and sewer.
How many bedrooms are in the house, do you know?
I don't remember, is it four?
It depends on how you set it up.
Yeah, three to four.
The former owner of the house, but. There's four bedrooms.
Four bedrooms.
Four bedrooms.
Roughly four bedrooms.
So, yeah, so a family, if we have a family that's in need, and I did talk with Karen Horn, she said it would take about three months to get that going, to have a lottery, to be an affordable unit.
And I think what you're saying is, if there's any work to be done on the property as well, excavating and all that, you guys might understand that you'd want someone there to make sure there's no artifacts dug up or anything like that? Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes.
Right. So the select board would be the overseer of the property, if there's any excavation to be done, you guys would like to be notified?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
It's only an appointment, so there's no vote to be taken on this. So I think if there's, upon our discussion, there's a vote to be taken, we'll have to put it on our future agenda. Steve, do you have any comments or questions on it?
Yes, Cindy, would it be fair to say that tonight's meeting and appointment is just to kinda have an initial conversation? You're not looking for any action to be taken?
Not looking for any action, just conversation.
Okay.
Sure. Yeah, and I think no matter what we do at that property, nothing's gonna happen overnight, so we have time to explore our options.
Trish?
Is this the oldest, would this be the oldest house in Marshfield?
No, it is not.
Okay.
So the main house is from the 1800s.
Oh, okay.
It's only a back portion that is believed to be from mid 1650s.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
So it's not the main house.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So what do you say, saying, talking to Karen Horn, you say, three months is the latest?
Said it would take about three months.
For?
To, for them to put together a lottery, to find a family, to move in there for affordable housing.
And then, but you said, does it have heat in the house, or does it need to be?
It was probably shut off, because nobody's been in there.
All right, so we don't know if that's working or not, so if you were to?
Correct, so once we do purchase the property, then we could have.
So you don't wanna do, I'm looking at, you're not gonna do a lottery until we get the house all squared up?
Correct, oh, yes. Oh, yes.
And then, I imagine, as you said, it was gonna be through CPC funding?
For an archaeological dig.
What, okay, is there any that could be used towards improving the house at all?
No.
No?
Nope.
It'd be different, different funding source on that?
Correct, if we find there are major issues, then obviously, we're not gonna have somebody move into it. We're gonna have, then we'd have to go to CPC to do some renovations.
And I think it's too late right now to put anything forward to CPC for this, like up in spring, right? So that won't be until the fall?
Correct.
All right, so we got a little ways to go.
We got a, yep.
Okay, so I gotta look at the architectural aspect of it, is that if the select board decides to, I guess, put another unit on the property and there's wide excavation for it, that that would be the purpose of your architectural excavation request, that somebody be on site when that happens?
Correct.
Okay.
But if you're not planning to do it, we still would like to do an archaeological dig on the property.
Okay. I did have one thing. Oh, it says the house has a full basement. So when you say a full basement, is that like stand-up, you can walk around?
Yes, yes, you can.
Is it, is it dry?
I think it's dry most of the time. I'm not sure that we, didn't get a report that there was any water in it.
Yeah, so I was wondering where the area is, I wasn't too sure if, if water got into it or not.
I don't believe so, no.
Okay. That's all I have.
Could I just ask one?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, go ahead.
Is there anything that you wanted to add, Bob?
No, I think, you know, one of the least used, one of the least-used parts of our community preservation funds are for affordable housing. So I think Cindy's right, they could draw on some historical money that the CPC has to do their dig, but I think we could also draw upon our affordable housing reserves to improve the house and/or look at the possibility of making it available for two families or more. So we have a lot of money in that affordable housing reserve that we hardly ever use.
Thank you.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Okay.
No, that's, that's good. That would be good.
I appreciate it, Cindy.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Cindy.
All right, 6:10. The classification here is not till 6:15, and we have to adhere to that. So let's go on to number nine, which would be the discussion vote on common victuals license application, Bond Me Express, I hope I am saying that correctly. Name of applicant, Min Kotron Vo, I think it is, 281 Billings Road, Quincy, Mass., 02170. Name of business, Bond Me Express. The business address will be 11 Snow Road, Marshfield. Hours of operation, Monday through Sunday, 11 a.m. to 8 p.m. Other information, new business located at current Hannah's Sweet Cakes location. Signed by the applicant, 10/15/25. It's a note here from Inet Moshe, the building apartment has to approve their DBA that we have received, I will have Andrew approve today, and I forward you, forward the approved to you. Beth may have reached out to you, so I apologize, this is redundant, we have an application for an annual common victuals license from Bond Me Express on 11 Snow Road. Just let us know if you have any recommendations or contingency to the select board. So that was to the building apartment. But other than that, that's all I see. Steve, do you have any questions or comments on it?
No, thank you.
Trish?
Is this taking over Hannah's Sweet Cakes? Did they go out?
I think so. I don't know, is Andrew, can you answer that?
Okay, I'm just curious.
Yes, they closed, and I think that this is a new business coming in.
Okay.
It's the only reason I haven't approved their DBAs, I haven't gotten like a new, like a full, they haven't, they haven't let me know if they're making any changes to the building or the restaurant or whatever it is.
Okay, so can we still approve it without the DBA?
Oh, I guess we could put a contingency, I don't know, what's the process, Andrew, in regards to us approving it?
I mean.
They still have to go through you no matter what, right?
It's not reliant upon, you certainly can grant your approval, and that just means as soon as I give my approval, as far as the building permit, they can just get going.
Yeah.
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 Okay, thank you.
Okay. So, I move that the board vote to approve an annual common victuals license to Bond Me Express for the property at 11 Snow Road, Marshall, Massachusetts. Do I have a second?
Second.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right. It's 6:12, less than two minutes. Got the Treasury's collective's position.
Indian heritage.
Indian heritage, might as well do that real quick, I guess. Somebody submitted this, National Society Dawes, the American Revolution, American Indians Committee Proclamation, National American Indian Heritage Month, whereas the history and culture of our great nation have been significantly influenced by American Indians and indigenous peoples, and whereas the contributions of American Indians have enhanced the freedom, prosperity, and greatness of America today, and whereas the customs and traditions are respected and celebrated as part of our legacy throughout the United States, and whereas the Native American Awareness Week began in 1976 and recognition was expanded by Congress and approved by President George Bush in August 1990, does in the month of November as National American Indian Heritage Month, and whereas in honor of the National American Indian Heritage Month, community celebrations, as well as numerous cultural, artistic, educational, and historical activities have been planned. Now therefore, I, by virtue of the authority vested in me as, all right, so it's supposed to be all filled out here, so I'm gonna skip all that. So, Trish, do you have any, or I should say, Steve, do you have any questions, comments on this, or you wanna make a, I guess, a comment on the proclamation, as I should say?
Sure, I mean, you know, I mean, there's plenty of history to explore, but for any history buffs, right? I mean, everyone loves World War II, if you're a history buff, so the Navajo code talkers was really fascinating. So, you know, everyone's competing for a code that can't be broken, and basically, there was a World War I veteran who was raised on a Navajo reservation, and at the time, only 30, fewer than 30 non-Navajo people outside of the tribe could actually speak the language. And, you know, by using that, you know, we could transmit an English message in 20 seconds, whereas a cipher machine would take 30 minutes. So it's the only spoken code that has never been broken in history, and it was a really important effort to transmit sensitive information during the battle in real time and quickly. And I just think it's a really interesting bit of history. The movie didn't quite do it justice, as they never do, but it thought it was an interesting little nugget that people wanted to look into on their own, the Navajo code talkers during World War II.
Yeah, it's, aside from that, there's, American Indians, there's a lot of history with them regardless, and they're going through that process right now in regards to the state, trying to eliminate symbolism on our state flag, which I'm opposed to, and that's unfortunate, because it seems to me that the, wiping out the mascots that are eliminating the culture. Trish, do you have any?
No.
All right. Let me see here. So I move that the board votes to proclaim the month of November 22nd as American Heritage Month in the town of Marshfield. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I'm gonna abstain.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Anne Marie, we are here for the 6:15 classification hearing.
Good evening.
Hello.
Hi.
All right, so give us your presentation, Anne Marie, please.
Does he have to read the hearing?
Oh, the hearing thing, thank you so much, I forgot about that.
I learned from last year when I just dried in, I was waiting.
Recall, Anne Marie, the select board will hold a public hearing on Monday, November 3rd, 25 at 6:15 p.m. We got the allocation, the FY 2026 tax levy among the various classes of property in the town. All real estate in the town of Marshfield is classified according to use. The allocation of the tax levy may be adjusted within certain limits between the residential class and the commercial, industrial, personal property classes by the select board. Interested citizens are invited to participate in discussion. Select Board, Eric S. Kelly, Chair, Stephen R. Darcy, Vice Chair, Patricia F. Simpson, Clerk, please publish in the Coastal Mariner, 10/16/25. I think if that's it, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So every year, the select board is able to vote on four items on how they determine the tax burden among the major property classes within certain limits. The select board must vote whether to establish different rates among classes of property or to continue to tax all classes at the same rate by adopting a factor of one. The adoption of different rates does not change the total property tax levy, rather it determines the share of the total levy to be carried by each class. So tonight, we're gonna go over the four different votes, the tax rate shift, open space, residential exemption, and small business exemption. But first, let's just kinda go over how is the tax rate set. When the budget, when the budget to operate the town is finalized by town meeting, all receipts, actual and estimated, except for real estate and personal property taxes, are subtracted. In fiscal year 2026, the final amount to be raised is 1,000,000, 153,830,568.13, and the receipts total to 67,499,880.8 cents, leaving 86,330,688 to be raised by real and personal property taxes. Taxable valuation for fiscal year 26 is 8,983,422,273. Dividing the taxable value into the monies to be raised by the real estate and personal property tax makes a single tax rate of $9.61 per thousand of value. How is the tax rate split to give relief to residential class of properties? Marshfield has 94.12% of total taxable valuation for resident, residential class valuations. The commercial, industrial, and personal property total is 5.88%. Normally, when you split the, split that rate and move the burden, you have more like Normally, when you split the, split that rate and move the burden, you have more, like usually twenty, thirty percent of the commercial, industrial, personal property valuation that you can shift that burden to. With a single tax rate, each class raises the proportional share of the amount of money to raise, known as the levy. The fiscal twenty-six, the resident class would raise ninety-four point twelve percent of the levy, which is eighty-one million, two hundred and fifty-five thousand, thirty-nine dollars, and the commercial, industrial, personal property classes would raise the balance. To split that rate, many give the residential some relief. The town has historically voted to allow the shift, not to allow the shift of the commercial, industrial, personal property, keeping it at a single rate. The next slide just goes down showing what those numbers are and how that shift would work. The total levy of residential class needs to be raised divided into the residential value. Actually, let me go to that one, to the one that's up there. The tax rate and estimated unit, sorry, the tax rate is estimated until approved by the Department of Revenue. So just keep in mind, we're not voting on that rate amount, we're just voting on who's paying what of that levy. This sheet shows if you were to shift it at the max, it would bring some relief of roughly two hundred and eighty-eight dollars to residential properties, but it would raise over three thousand dollars for the commercial, industrial, personal property, properties. So that's a big burden for them to carry for a little relief. Tax rate shift examples is the next sheet, and it just shows if you stayed at one, if you shifted it by ten, twenty, thirty, forty, or fifty, it just gives the idea of what the levy amounts would end up being and what the tax rates would be for each class. And then on the next sheet, residential examples, showing what each one of those rates would be and what the difference would be for the residential. And then if you go to the next one, it shows the commercial, industrial examples, what it would be for their effect on how much more they would have to pay if you were to do that. Any questions on that before I go to open space?
No.
No? Okay. So open space, I tried to add a little bit more onto this this year because there were a few questions. Open space is land maintained in an open or natural condition, which contributes significantly to the benefit of enjoyment of the public and which is not subject to permanent conservation restrictions, held for production of income, or taxable under the provisions of chapter land, which is chapter sixty-one, sixty-one A, and sixty-one B. The select board may discount up to twenty-five percent of open space share of taxes, but the Board of Assessors has determined that Marshfield does not have eligible open spaceland. Most large parcels are on a chapter land program. So for classification, there, there is no open space. And then the next is residential exemption. This exemption is given to all owner-occupied properties, the property being used by the owner of, as his or her domicile. The calculation is taking the total residential class valuation and dividing it by the number of parcels that the class reflects and getting an average residential value. The vote is to take one to thirty-five percent of the average residential value, and that is subtracted to all qualifying properties from the taxable value. The next sheet is just a little bit of the math, if you were looking to do this. We, I just picked eighty-five hundred properties. We would have to have at least two to three years of research and additional staff members and probably contracted services to research this more if we were going to go this direction. And then if you go to the next page, that's just how the math breaks out. If, I use the example of twenty percent. And then residential exemption cautions, in order to adopt this exemption, the assessing department would need at least two to three years of lead time, processing applications and determining eligibility is a lengthy process. We would need additional staff members and contracted services to implement this option. Many applications tend to come in after the bills are issued, and the overlay account would need to be increased to cover those applications. And I'm gonna stop here and let Charlie speak a little bit about the residential exemption because he's worked in towns that have gone through the process.
Absolutely, Charlie. So a number of the Cape communities do use the residential exemption program. I worked in a few of them. I worked in Province Town, Wellfleet, both had residential exemptions. I think both were thirty percent. And let's face it, in the Cape, we have a very high percentage of our property tax base is non-residents, you know, seasonal visitors, and a lot of investment properties now. So those towns have utilized this program. I did call, I was reading the newspaper this weekend, or last week, for the Cape, and the town of Eastham is sort of dipping their toe into this conversation because it's, it's complicated and, and there's a lot of work to do to do it right. So what Eastham did is they adopted a residential exemption of three percent. And, you know, why so small? You know, why not thirty percent? Why not ten percent? And the reason they did that is because there's a lot of legwork to do and, and you really have to go through a process to determine what's a year-round domicile and what's a seasonal property. And, you know, you can send out forms in the mail to people to respond and say, hey, you know, you need to demonstrate, give us some documentation that you're domiciled here. But people are busy. They have busy lives and it ends up, they don't open them, they throw them away, they forget to return them, and hence, what Anne Marie talked about is you really have to build up your overlay reserve because after you send your tax bills out, there's gonna be a lot of abatement applications, people saying, oh, I didn't return the form, I do live here. And then think about it, what, what about the people that don't file their abatement application within thirty days? They're out of luck. So they're gonna be paying that premium cost until the next tax cycle. So there's a lot of, you know, public education and process that has to go in this to do it right. My recommendation is you not adopt a residential exemption. If you are interested in doing it in the future, I really think you should form a small working group or a small committee to really study this, take a look at the experience from other towns, and, and do it in a very methodical, thoughtful process. Because otherwise, you're gonna create a lot of, you know, unhappy customers. And I, I think too is, let's face it, you'd probably have a lot of families that own seasonal homes in this town for, for years and years and years too. So you wanna be deliberate and thoughtful as you go through the process. So anyway, I can answer any questions about the residential exemption, but it's, it can be complex and it should be done right if you're going to do it.
Thank you.
Do we, I guess, let's put it this way, the communities that you're affiliated with have a knowledge down the Cape, I mean, has it proven to be financially good for them in regards to, what, in regards to going down this route?
Yeah, I mean, if you look at Province Town, I think off the top of my head, seventy-five percent of those properties are non-resident properties. And the affordability issue, particularly as you go down Cape, is really difficult for year-round residents. So I think in Province Town's case, they went through an exhaustive process, but let's face it, they have a thirty percent residential exemption. So they reduce the year-round value of a home by thirty percent. So that, that's good for, you know, a lot of the Cape communities have people that are in the service industries or retirees that live year-round, and then that money is added to the non-resident, you know, non-domiciled homeless. So these towns have used it in a manner that I think works for the Cape. Same thing in Wellfleet, you know, they're, when I was working there, they're about to, all these towns are dealing with nitrogen issues, building extremely expensive wastewater treatment plants, collection systems, everything was private septic systems on the Cape. So they're using these tools to reduce the burden on year-round residents. And, and I think, and as I mentioned, Eastham now is, is gonna go down the same route, and I think their goal might be a ten percent residential exemption, but they just wanted to walk, walk down that path in a slow, deliberate manner to make sure that they educate people and do it properly. So I think it is a good tool. I don't know what percentage of your community is, is not domiciled here, but I think it, if you're going to do it, you just have to do it in a very deliberate manner. So it's been, it's been a good tool for many Cape communities.
Do you know, I don't know what the numbers are compared down there compared to what residences in Marshall, but do we have any numbers in regards to the expense they shall in order to implement this?
Oh, you know, that's, I, I did, as I said, I called Eastham today, but I didn't really talk to them about what their detailed process was and what their expenses were. And when Anne Marie and I were talking about it last Thursday, I think that's just the idea of forming a working group and a study group, is to really dig deep. I didn't, I didn't spend a lot of time on that.
Do you think Eastham just started with three percent because the people are, like you said, throwing away their paperwork and all that, that, all right, they're gonna see an increase, but if they don't get it in the thirty days, at least it's not a big hit, and this way they're gonna put their paperwork in, and then eventually when they get everybody, everybody to sign on, then that way they'll already increase it down the road? Is that, do you think that's what Eastham's goal is?
I know that's what they did.
That is what their goal is, is it's a small, and then people notice it, and then they start getting...
And then they can work it up over time. But they're gonna work out all the kinks in the system. They're gonna educate with people, they're gonna have a very good feel of who's domiciled and who's not. So that's why they're doing it in that manner.
What's your thoughts on it, Anne Marie?
My thoughts, I mean, I think it would be great if we were able to help people. I know that it's going to be very time-consuming and it could be very costly. It's, it's a lot of work. It is a lot of work, and we would definitely need to have the time to really research it and make sure that we are going to roll it out in a good way. Instead of trying to quickly do it and get it done, it, it would be very cumbersome for my department. I'm already short-staffed, but if we were able to, you know, figure out how we could juggle all of it, I'm not afraid of hard work. But it's one of those things where I need to be able to have the support if there was finances. And then the other thing too is really make sure that we have the overlay covered for this because that is a big concern of mine. People might not do it the first year. I think if you did a smaller percentage, that might be, if you were thinking about doing it, a good way to start out and then maybe changing it once we get the information out there. It would be a huge process with beforehand, holding meetings, mailings, researching properties, really see who's, who and what's the, who's domiciled. It's just, it's a huge process. It really would, it would be...
I mean, a lot, a lot of times you can say, oh, who's paying a personal property tax bill, right? Because that's an indication that they're not domiciled, you know, but it's not perfect.
It's not perfect. We may catch more people that need to have personal property bills, but it's one of those things where it's, if, if we're going to do it, I think we need to allow us the time and the support to be able to do it in a manner where it's thought out and we're able to do it in a way that it's thoughtful for the residents, for the people that may get it, may not get it. There are people that have multiple homes that live in town, so they might get it on one property, but then they're gonna get hit on their other property. There are people in town that have a residence here, a home here, but they also have a residency in Florida because they have a property in Florida, so they're able to get different, you know, reductions there that are, that's better than Massachusetts. So there's so many different factors involved with it that we really would have to be very thoughtful on how we did it.
Yeah, so I mean, it goes to what Charlie was mentioning, is that...
Correct.
We have to have a working group to study it.
Yeah.
And I think if we have a working group, I would think that, that would take a lot of the pressure off your shoulders if it works, considering doing something like this because they would already have, if you gather that information to a degree, as much as they possibly can.
I would still have to be very much involved with it because my office would be the one that would have to, to do it all, but, but yes.
All right. Steve, any questions, comments?
No, thank you.
Trish?
No, thank you.
Thank you for your insight, Charlie. Small business exemption, the small business exemption is similar to the residential exemption. The select board can vote a percentage of up to ten percent to exempt property value. The qualifying businesses must have property valued under a million dollars and have fewer than ten employees. The amount of the total value exempt from all qualifying properties is then subtracted from the total assessed value of all c, commercial, industrial properties, which in return will increase the commercial, industrial properties rate, or basically it's, we're shifting the same, we still have to pay X, the pay X amount of the levy. So for exempting some on some, we're moving that burden to the rest of the commercial, industrial properties. The credit does, credit goes to the property owner, not the small business tenant. I believe it was in fiscal year two thousand nineteen, the town adopted an exemption of all personal property accounts with a value of less than ten thousand, which that directly impacts the small businesses who are able to get that exemption. It went from two thousand to ten thousand in fiscal year, I believe, nineteen. An annual application process is required confirming payroll information, and we would still have to process all of that, and we'd also have to think about the overlay as well. It's hard to track. I know that the state does send a list. They still would have to file for the, still have to file the application, and it's one of those things where it's not going to directly help, if they're, they're a tenant, it's not gonna directly help them like that personal property exemption when we raised it from two thousand to ten thousand. And then if you go to the next page, considering the analysis and fiscal impact, the Board of Assessors voted during their meeting on October twenty-seventh to recommend to the select board a factor of one and reject the split tax rate, small commercial exemption, residential exemption, and the open space discount. And then the pages after that page is just history, the next page is history of tax rates, assessments, and new growth within the town, and it just keeps going with different historical information regarding what the sales are doing within the town, what the tax bills, average tax bills have been, and so on. Any questions?
Is that it?
That's it. Does she have any questions?
I think you asked that before, any questions, so was it, should we be ending for something else startup, so?
No, yeah, no, that's the end.
All right, so I'm, I know we spoke about this this year and last year, as I'm trying to get educated on this process and discuss with you, I'm satisfied with everything you've given me, the information on everything like that. Steve, do you have anything to say?
No, thanks.
So, all right, so Bob, I don't think you wrote out a motion for this.
There's one in the package.
Was it the bottom?
Yeah, on the Board of Assessors.
Right above that little...
About the picture.
No, I got that. All right, so I move that the town of Marshall continued to tax all classes at the same rate by adopting a factor of one and reject the small commercial exemption, residential exemption, and open space discount. Do I have a second?
Second.
Aye.
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 Thank you, Anne Marie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm just gonna have you guys sign lists. Now I'll vote it. I don't have to do this. It's just the LA five, just showing that...
Where do you, where do you want my...
Just down here. It's fine.
Are you doing all three of us?
Yep.
So mine would go third.
Sure.
I'm used to lines.
You can be, you can be first.
I can't be first, I'm not allowed.
Oh, jeez.
I'm a rule follower.
I guess you're in the middle, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did a nice job once again, Anne Marie. All right. Discussion and vote on vacancy in search of treasurer collective's position. So, oh geez, what am I thinking here? I forgot about the, the two attorneys, thank you, Trish, for that reminder. So we have an interview with, interview with me, Tom Acosta, LLC law firm finalist for labor, position of labor counsel. I believe that would be Kate Federoff, if I'm correct.
Yes. Hello.
Hello, Kate. And are you Russell?
Yeah, and I can wait up.
I was going to say, that would be fair.
I'll give you all my tricks.
So you continue.
Thank you so much for having me tonight, and thank you for the opportunity. So yes, I have been a lawyer for 20 years. I, before joining this firm, I worked for the city of Brackton. I was the senior assistant solicitor. So we were a self-insured city, so we handled everything from intermunicipal agreements to civil rights violations, you know, alleged abuses by police departments, for example, to all the labor and employment negotiations and employment matters, going to MCAD, things like that. So, and I handled all aspects of that component while I was in the office. And I loved working for the city. I loved being a city employee and wasn't looking to change until my now partner approached me and asked me to have a coffee with him and invited me to join the firm. At first I said no, but then he told me a little bit about his firm, and I was much more intrigued. And what attracted me was the likeness to working as a city employee because as counsel, we like to really get to know our clients and get involved on the front end before things become problematic rather than wait and have decisions be made without proper legal guidance, and then it's much more difficult to pivot. So what I like to approach things is I like to say, okay, here are all your options, here are risks associated with each decision, and then you all make the decision, and I would help execute on that along with the town administrator or whomever was on my team. So, but when you go into any given situation, whether or not it's a difficult employee and you're dealing with termination or tough negotiation, it's really important to understand what decisions are made and what those consequences will yield. So that's my approach. And when it comes to labor relations, I really have a healthy respect for all employees, you know, and I think it's good to build a collaborative relationship with those employees because then oftentimes you can avoid problems because, you know, you're not there to swoop in, get billable hours or something like that, you're there to problem solve with those employees. So that's my general philosophy on labor and employment matters. I don't know if you have particular questions or want to talk about your experiences or what, how I could help you.
Any questions?
Absolutely. I don't know if you wanted to go first or...
No.
Okay. Could you, you know, it's tough because depending on the nature of the incident, you can't get into details, but as far as you can go, can you give an example of a difficult labor situation that you've encountered in your career and how you approached it and how you handled it?
Sure. So, and, and I put things in two different buckets. So I put them in labor and then employment, so employment being your discrimination claims and all of those kinds of things. But I'll give you a, a real example. I had a change in leadership in one of my communities, right? And the direction from one set of negotiations really fundamentally changed with a different administration. And I already had contract settlements that were completed. And the new contracts, after saying essentially, you can imagine, no, 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 that's why there tends to be controversy. When you say yes, 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 everyone's happy, but when you say no, and you say these are the reasons why we can't go as far as you want, but you make a settlement, you do the work and you get a settlement done, and then you pivot and give something more generous to a different group, and there could be all kinds of reasons driving those decisions, but let's just say it doesn't breed a lot of harmony, right? And so then these are, these are your employees, hopefully, for 30 years, you know? You don't want to have negative relationships with your employees and hard feelings. So the question became, how can we pivot and, and still respect the process that happened but pivot going forward? So we talked long and hard about how was there a possibility to make the contracts and then the next round different, give assurances, all kinds of things to rebuild that trust with various groups, right? So that's, that's the tricky thing. If you have lots and lots of contracts and you're trying to make settlements, there are all kinds of deviations, and how do you make people feel like they're not the redheaded stepchild for, for lack of a better word?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And could you give an example of a time where you had to advocate for a particular legal position that may not have been popular with either town officials or the public and how you approached it?
Yes, so oftentimes labor council takes unpopular positions, and I, I look back to when, I'm not sure if you guys were around during this, but healthcare reform, right? This was kind of like the third rail of things that came, people were, entities were empowered by, right? So the question was, do you implement or do you not? And I can tell you, I was in Brackton at the time, and I was a lot younger then, but I want to say 300 angry employees came to that meeting, and I had to cough my way through that. But it was, it was something that the mayor was really interested in putting forward because that gives a much different approach to bargaining, right? Taking healthcare off the table gives a much different approach to bargaining. Actually, it was completely unsuccessful because we had to get it through the council, and they were unwilling to do that at the moment, but it did yield a better negotiation when we actually negotiated the, the healthcare plan design. So certainly unpopular opinions or decisions are something that labor council has to advocate for, but I think if you do it with an understanding that this is going to impact people, right? In the end, in front of you are all human beings that are working for you. If you can do it in an empathetic way, it, it hopefully comes across with less of a sting than, than just simply saying, we can do it, and I'm not going to give you an explanation. You know, it's always important to engage with people and have you be understood by them. So go to where they are, I think, is the better way to approach things.
Thank you. And could you give us a sense of where your physical footprint is in terms of where your offices are located? And, you know, the reason I ask that is because the next round of collective bargaining is already here around the corner.
Yeah.
And I think it's most productive when it's done in person and everyone's at the table together.
Hundred percent. So we, my firm has offices in Newburyport, Millis, which is near Foxborough, and New Bedford. So in theory, I'm out of the Millis office, but I think the last time I was in the Millis office was about three or four months ago. I don't go there frequently because with my practice, I am out at clients virtually every single day. And the rare days when I don't have an in-person meeting, I work from my home. I live in Easton, so half an hour, 40 minutes away. So, and I agree with you 150%, negotiations with maybe the exception of the first two meetings when you're just exchanging proposals are much better in person because you do have the ability to suss out your audience, make sure you're being understood, and you can see that in facial expressions and body language and all of those kinds of things. So I don't actually negotiate virtually, even when I have to go to Western Mass, and I go very far to Western Mass. It's, you know, Vermont, and then I practically go to Canada, so, or I think it seems like Canada when I go that far north. But yes, so travel is no problem for me, and it so happens that Marshfield is very close for me.
Awesome. This is my last question. Could you just kind of clarify us in the layout, you know, how your firm bills for, you know, travel time and commuting and mileage? So, you know, let's say there was a case that had to go to Boston and it took two hours to get there, how does your firm bill that?
Yeah, so, I mean, the way I've proposed it is portal to portal, but I have put caps on for those rare circumstances where it is going to be something that's completely out of everyone's control, and Boston traffic is a great example of that, right? So I'd be willing to put a cap on travel time anyway to ensure that you're not billing for something that doesn't provide you a benefit. Alternatively, what I've done in the past is when I've had a situation like that where it's unusual, I've done a credit back. Yeah.
Perfect. And could you just give us a sense of what you know about Marshfield or what you've learned about it?
Yeah, so I know that there's been a change in leadership. I know that, as you know, there was a, a contract that I helped negotiate where there was quite a delay in settling, and sometimes that happens just for legitimate reasons. You just can't come to a deal for various reasons, and it's not a criticism or anything like that. So I am quite familiar with those aspects. I have an instinct of what this next round of collective bargaining will be without disclosing that. And, yeah, no, I mean, I, I love a small coastal community. My in-laws have a, a house in Green Harbor, a little cottage. Theirs isn't, if you're thinking about the residential abatement, theirs isn't anything fancy. It's a cottage. But it's a, it seems like a really wonderful community, and it, what I experienced was there were employees who had a lot of dedication and loyalty to this town, which says a lot about how you operate.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Awesome, thanks, Steve. Trish?
Yes, I'm wondering if you can tell us if you've had any past professional dealings with our previous labor council, John Clifford?
Yeah, John Clifford and Jamie and I, so municipal law is a small bar, as Bob knows. It's a very small bar, and then the labor and employment component of that is even smaller. So I think I know almost every labor and employment municipal lawyer. But John and Jamie and I have known each other now probably eight, 10 years. I've worked for them, for example, I've done investigations for them because apart from being municipal labor council and, and sometimes general council actually too, I have, I do investigations too. When there's something that perhaps labor, labor council or HR can't investigate for various reasons, they pull in someone independent. And so I've worked for them in the past. Likewise, I've had Jamie do investigations for me in the past. But I think it's a very professional relationship. I would never tell her how I would want an outcome to be. I say let the facts tell you, lead you to where you go, and I would never be led anyway either. So we've worked together several times, I'd say.
Okay, thank you.
Is that it?
Mm-hmm.
All right, I do have one question for you there, Kate. With the current economic situation, I don't know if you have any besides firefighters, but, but outside of our town with labor negotiations, how has it been with the negotiations, especially surrounding the economic situation in a lot of communities? How have you been dealing with that?
Well, this round of negotiations has been a bit tougher, right? There are a lot of communities now that are hitting up against an economic ceiling, and that's partially because costs are really exploding and beyond 2.5%, right? And you're constrained by your levy to the 2.5% because of Proposition 2.5. So it has been, when it was, we thought COVID was going to be a disaster, right? Because the ceiling was going to fall and, you know, we were going to run out of money and people wouldn't pay their tax bills, and all of that really didn't show itself. So we, I don't want to say felt flush because I don't think municipalities ever feel flush. I mean, that's too much, but we could give reasonable raises. And in the last round of negotiations, it has been tough because we're telling people who go to the grocery store, just like you and I do, they have their mortgages and their electric bills and all of those other things, and we're saying, but we can't afford to give you more than X percent, and it's a lot smaller than it was the last round of negotiations. So it was, I, I think it took a lot longer because you had to really demonstrate, and I think only rightly so, right? Demonstrate that this is a real situation because, right, I've been doing this a long, long time. So how do you start every negotiation? You start by saying, we don't have any money this year, right? Or at least I used to start that way, and then everyone was like, well, she says that every time, right? So now I don't lead with that. But you had to really demonstrate and say, here are the financials, and this is why I'm limited. It's not because I don't value what you bring to the table, because that's absolutely not true. These guys are making the town work. They're fixing the water pipes, they're fixing the sewer pipes, they're paying, making sure the tax bills are paid, all of those things. So it's not a matter of not valuing them, it's a matter of saying, we're just constrained here, and trying to get that message across is, is harder and it takes a lot longer than when you have a, a really great deal that you can give. So I think you just do with care, respect, and frankly, with honesty, and you just have to tell people the honest truth.
All right, Kate, I appreciate it. Thanks so much.
Yes. Any other questions?
No.
That's it?
Okay, fantastic. I really appreciate your time, and hopefully, I would love to work with you and I would love to help in any way I could.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
You too.
Is there anybody else that would wrestle? Okay, could you just start wrestling if he's out there?
Yeah, I'll grab him. Tell him.
Sorry. Now she's having a conversation with him.
Who is?
Kate.
Oh, is she? Don't say this. Don't say this. Say this.
They all know each other. It's like town administrators.
Small world.
Yep.
Should we take a timeout?
No, I think we're fine.
That's a... Hugely wild.
You should say that. You should say that, Joel. You should leave. That's the first question.
Hello, how are you doing today?
You guys are up to no good over there. I'll find out.
Trish has a good question.
I bet.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Yes.
Just start out with your name and if you want to give an introduction about yourself.
Sure. So I'm Russell Dupere, I'm the owner...
Sure. So I'm Russell Dupere. I'm the owner of the practice. Um, our practice has been in existence for about forty-five years. My father started the practice many years ago, uh, labor only. Back then, he was actually general counsel for the IBPO, um, back in the late seventies. And so he was general counsel for a number of years in the beginning of his practice and he decided to switch over to the employer side. And so ever since then, we've decided, um, my brother works for us as well and then another attorney, Kimberly Roach. And so we really focus just on labor. So a lot of firms are, they have specialists in that area. We actually only do that area. So when we say we specialize in labor, it's really, that's all we do. So if you ask us to do town council work, we don't do that at all. We don't do anything but labor. Um, so we do that for public sector only and it's cities, towns, school systems. For school systems, we also do general council work. So for a school, we do the whole gamut of legal issues. For cities and towns, we only do labor. Um, we've, I think you saw our client list. We have quite a few schools, quite a few, um, cities and towns. And those clients have been with us for many, on the whole time, so forty, forty-five years. We've almost never lost any clients. I mean, literally less than five, I would say, in the entire time our firm has been in existence. Um, we don't advertise, we don't do any of that type of stuff. Like, we really just focus on servicing clients. Um, so one of the reasons I think we've been so successful in getting the number of clients we have is that we're really focused on making sure we get back to you right away, for one thing. Uh, we will talk to you anytime, day or night, weekends, um, we're always available. So, and if one of us is on vacation, there's always somebody covering. And that person, we all know the exact same things. We do the same type of work every day, day in and day out. So a lot of places or firms, you'll see that there is a backup or two, but those backups don't actually do labor all the time. So it's not quite as useful to the client. Um, we also have very close relationships with our clients usually. Um, so a lot of times we have retainer agreements, which I didn't formally propose to the town. Um, but most of our clients are on a retainer agreement, so I'd say about ninety percent of them. And that means with our firm at least, that if we say it's X amount per month, it's always that amount. Even if I have to argue two arbitrations that month and I do all this extra work, we never change our rate when we do it that way. Um, hourly is two hundred and fifty an hour. Um, our firm's a little different in the way we bill though, cause I don't bill you for travel. I don't bill for anything except for time I'm actually working for you directly. Um, and that's mainly because I'm always talking to other clients anyway when I'm driving. So I'm dealing with them. It's not really, it doesn't make sense to me, at least, to bill one client for driving to you and the other client for talking to them at the same time. So that's kind of unusual too. Um, also, I would say a lot of firms with their retainers, they don't really, um, it's kind of like an estimate for you, but it doesn't mean they're not gonna go over that number. We don't, we don't do that either. So I didn't, I would need to know more information about the level of litigation you've had in the past, the number of unions you have. And I could give you a really good estimate then on a retainer amount, uh, but I would need more of that information to do it. Um, I would say that we really, because we specialize in justice area, like I had a JLMC arbitration last week. We deal directly with civil service all the time. Um, MCAD is usually covered by insurance, but we'll do that if, if your insurance company doesn't cover MCAD came, claims. Um, so we're pretty, usually when I get a question, I know the answer without having to research it, because I've answered it many, many times for other people. And that's true of the other attorneys in my office. Um, I happen to be out in this area a lot, which is why when I saw the posting, I was interested in it, because I do represent Duxbury, um, a lot of schools in this area too. Something Silver Lake, um, Avon, By County Collaborative, Tri County. So there's a whole bunch of, I'm out, usually out here two to three times a week at a minimum. Um, so your can, your location's actually pretty convenient for me. And I handle myself, um, the Eastern Mass clients. So the other attorneys in the office typically do Central Mass, Western Mass, Berkshire County. And I'm usually the one out in Eastern Mass. So that's kind of a little bit about the firm. I don't know if you have questions for me or?
Steve?
Yes, please.
Sure.
Um, I know given the specific nature of the example, you may not be able to get very specific, but could you give an example of a complex labor case you had to tackle and how you approached it?
Um, so I would say maybe we've had a lot of cases on health insurance that were pretty complex years ago, when it wasn't really as decided as it is today. So there were a lot of questions about whether you had to negotiate copay changes, whether you had to, um, negotiate any aspect of insurance. Cause years ago, employers didn't, they just changed insurance. So that was a pretty complex round and that went through the whole state. I'm sure you had those cases too. Uh, we actually won the only case that was won by an employer back then. Um, but we knew it was gonna be a loser in, in court, so we ended up settling. But pennies on the dollar, it was actually a good decision. But I think those cases were probably the most complicated just because it, there was so much money involved and it was also time consuming. There was a lot of, um, you really had to do a lot of research to, to argue successfully, which we did in that one case. But there was about a hundred and twenty cases where the employers I'd lost. Uh, but I would say kind of on a day-to-day basis, we have, the number of cases that actually go to court are so small in the labor field. They, they all go to Department of Labor Relations. Um, trying to think of one, we had to go to Department of Labor and then went to court. Um, on the school side, we have a lot of First Amendment cases. Those are actually really complex. And so one of those cases would be, um, there's questions about, so for example, Title IX, transgender rights and how they all interact with each other or intersect and whose rights may, cause all of those are balancing tests. So you have to decide like which one on balance outweighs the other one. That case actually hasn't been fully decided yet, but, um, I think that'll be probably the next most complex case coming up in the public sector at least.
Yeah, thank you.
Sure.
And could you give an example of a situation where the legal position you had to take may have been unpopular with town officials or the public and, and how you approached it?
Um, so I would say actually in the insurance area again. So back when Chapter Thirty-two B, Section Twenty-one through Twenty-three came out, that allows municipalities to basically adopt the law and then you can change insurance without going through that negotiation process that I described before. Um, so that was pretty controversial. I know in Duxbury, for example, uh, when that happened, the, the board's, you know, uh, meeting space was just packed with employees and families. And that was pretty unpopular everywhere. Uh, but ultimately, most employers did adopt that statute. But that was, um, I would say pretty difficult time because of what you're changing and it's so important to employees really.
Sure. And could you give us a sense of where your physical footprint is and where your offices are located? And, you know, the reason I ask is because,
Sure.
you know, we're already at the next round of collective bargaining negotiations. So I feel like those are most productive when everyone's together in person at the table. So could you kind of talk about that?
Yes. So I completely agree with that, because I think Zoom is really ineffective for bargaining in particular. I don't really like it that much, period, but I definitely do not like it for bargaining. Um, because there's so many things that happen across the table where you really need to see not only what people are saying, but how they're interacting with you and your body language, that type of thing. So our office is in Westfield, uh, Massachusetts, which is on, kind of like where Ninety-one and Ninety intersect. Um, but we travel all over the state. And so usually, um, I have one attorney that covers kind of like Route Two, Worcester County and Hampton County. And then I have another attorney that handles, handles most of Berkshire County. I'm typically out in this area. So like Wednesday, I'm here all day, uh, for Duxbury. I think Thursday, I'm out with Silver Lake. But, so we just travel all over the state. I'm not really in my office very often, um, because I'm, I meet with clients directly. And it's not only bargaining I like to do in person, but even just general meetings I like to have in person with the client, because I don't think it's that effective. So to do it on the phone or virtually for certain things. Um, so what I do is I just schedule like a whole day where I'm out in this area or I'll schedule a whole day where I'm in the Springfield area. So that's typically how we do it and we've done that for the entire time the firm's been in place. It's also one of the reasons I don't charge for travel, because I'm gonna spend the whole day there anyway. So it's, um, it's worked out pretty well. And usually I combine clients, so I'll meet with Duxbury for a while, then I'll go to Silver Lake. Sometimes I go to Halifax, so I'm kind of, you know, all over. Um, and luckily I don't mind driving, so.
Yeah. And, you know, you addressed this, you know, in your opening remarks, but I just wanted to be fair and ask you, Attorney Federoff, the same questions. Could you kind of talk about travel and commute time and, you know, how that would be billed or not billed? Like if you had a case that brought you into Boston and it took you two hours to get there, could you just touch on that?
Yeah, I don't bill for that at all. So there's, there's no, the, the only thing we would bill for is the parking. So if we spend sixty dollars for a day, we'll bill you for that, but, but we don't charge for tolls. We don't charge for mileage, we don't charge for travel time. It would only be the time I'm actually there.
Yeah, fair.
At the hearing.
Yeah. And last question, could you just tell us, you know, what you know about the town of Marshfield or what you've learned about it?
Um, I know a fair amount, because I'm in Duxbury a lot. So I kind of hear about all the surrounding towns. Um, I know you've gone through a fair amount of transition lately. And I don't know the whole, I know there's always a backstory. I don't know the backstory, I don't really need to know it. Um, but yes, I've done a fair amount of research on the town. I think in many ways, you're, you're facing some of the same things Duxbury is, you know?
Thank you.
Sure.
Uh-oh, is it Mike?
Thank you, Steve. Go ahead, Trish.
Um, I was just wondering, uh, do you, have you ever had a professional relationship with our previous labor attorney, uh, John Clifford?
No.
Okay.
I've heard good things about him though.
Okay.
But I don't, I've never met him. I've just heard from the area that he's been here a long time.
Okay, thank you. I'm good.
We're kind of in a small world, so.
I know.
I, I have actually had many, um, cases with Federoff though.
Thank you, Trish. Uh, the only question I have for you is, uh, during this current economic situation, um, how was the, how was this impact on negotiations? And, um, the unions seem to be understanding of it. I guess you could look at regards to the situations going on with all the communities.
Um, I would say we're in a, there's a real transition right now. So what's happened the last few years is things, the settlements were very low for a while. The last three to five years, the settlements have become, uh, much more generous. There was also, what's really, um, public safety in particular, police and fire. The JLMC awards recently have been about twelve percent over three years. And sometimes it's a combination of they're giving post. So post is basically kind of like the new civil service. They've taken over certain aspects of what civil service used to do. And then they've added some new requirements. And so these awards have, have indicated that, well, they get an extra percent or two per year, which gets you up to that four percent a year for the settlements. The reality is the economic climate's changed so much that a lot of employers are saying, "Okay, we can't do that. We're gonna offer, you know, two percent." And so they hear two percent, the unions may hear that and say, "Well, I know these awards are twelve percent, so we're gonna go to JLMC." And so like the case I had last week, the, the people that work at the JLMC were saying, "We've never been this busy because everybody's going to JLMC, but it's because the settlements are so much higher, I mean, the awards are so much higher than the settlements are." So I track this really carefully, because I have, you know, I don't know, almost a hundred public sector clients. So the trends, it's interesting, the trends are not that much different from Eastern Mass all the way out to the New York border. The settlements are similar, the amounts are similar, but those JLMC awards are pushing up. You know, the ceiling is getting higher and higher for settlements. And so it's making it more and more difficult to settle with police and fire. The other thing I've noticed is that police, it's so hard to hire them now, that police are getting higher settlements than fire. That creates a problem too, cause internally, normally, police and fire get around the same amount. That's been, it's been changing. And partially because of those awards, because post only applies to police. So it's, it's, I think it's gonna be very difficult to sell contracts for the next couple of years because of those factors. And then also the governor, from what I'm hearing, is thinking about NICE cuts, which are the mid-year cuts, which hasn't happened since the recession. When I was dealing with contracts back then, that caused a lot of chaos, those mid-year cuts. So who knows if that's gonna happen? Um, but I do see the settlements trending down. They were around eight to nine percent over three years in the past and I, I just don't think public sector can afford that going forward, largely because of pension and insurance cost. The insurance cost went, I don't know what yours went up this year, but I have some clients that it went up, you know, one of them went up thirty-eight percent. So it's really, well, actually more than one of them, it was a whole trust went up by thirty-eight percent. And, and one of the increases was eighteen percent right in the middle of the year, because the, the trust started to go bankrupt. So I think that pressure from, and I, I keep hearing insurance is gonna go up, you know, fifteen to twenty percent on average this year. So if that happens, you know, if you look historically, which I've done, you can see that the employer and the employees, the amount they've spent on insurance has far outpaced everything else. So what's happened is the settlements have gone down, the insurance costs went up. And so there is a real pressure on wages. Um, but it's mainly because of insurance and Prop Two and a Half. Between those two things, you don't have a lot of other levers to pull, which is why, you know, Duxbury tried the override, because at some point, that's what you get to. I mean, it's inevitable, inevitable, unfortunately.
Thank you. Um, all right, so you're all set? You're all set. Um, all right, so I think we might as well move to the next part and that would be the action item, uh, of moving to a vote. Uh, do we need, do we get Kate?
Are you all set?
Yeah. Thank you.
Bye, thank you for coming in.
I don't know if Kate wanted to stay or, I don't know if Kate's still here or not.
No, I don't think, I think that was.
Did she leave? Good night.
Good night.
What's that?
Would be a little awkward.
It's, it's more customary for them both to leave than you discuss.
You wanna close the door?
Sure.
Thanks, Meg.
All right, so deliberations and vote on appoint of labor council. Uh, Steve, what are your thoughts about?
Um, I thought Attorney Federoff had, I really liked your answers. I thought they were really insightful and detailed. Um, I liked Attorney Dupere as well. I thought he came across as very earnest and forthright. Um, I do like that Attorney Federoff, in one of her answers, right? She has experience going through changes and transmission, and transitions to administration. And she's doing that right now for us. So I thought they were both very grounded and kind of understand the mechanics of how things work. Um, you know, we've been using Attorney Federoff on an ad hoc basis. So, you know, that gives me peace of mind, cause it's not theoretical, you know, the kind of work that she's gonna do. We know it, we've seen it. And it's not just, you know, simple stuff that she's been doing for us. It's been really complex, hot-button issues that she's worked on for us. She's done separation agreements, she's done grievances, she's done, um, a contract agreement. And now we have, the next round is basically here. So I feel like she would have a good sense of what's ahead and what lies down the road. And, you know, she has worked on building relationships. So, you know, I, I take comfort in knowing that she's a known commodity. She's had a chance to prove herself, we've seen the work that she's done. You know, I thought they both interviewed really well. But for me, I mean, we've, we've seen the work that she's been doing over these last several months. And, you know, she also has the lowest hourly rate proposed of all the firms that submitted a bid. So just the body of work that she's done, you know, that's kind of the, the tiebreaker for me. And I just think that her approach really turns down the temperature in negotiations, which is really important. And we're gonna have some tough negotiations ahead. And again, just, we've seen the work that she's done. I, I like having a sample size to kind of base a vote on. So, you know, that's why, you know, I'm, I would lean towards hiring. base a vote on. So, you know, that's why, you know, I'm, I would lean towards hiring Mead, Tallerman, and Costa.
Okay. Trish?
Well, I'd like to go in a different direction, and I would like to go with the Dupere, Attorney Dupere.
Is that all you wanna comment on?
That's all I wanna say.
Okay. Um, like I said before, when, uh, before we decided to have a both different interview, I was, uh, very pleased in talking to a whole bunch of communities at Dupere, representative in the comments they made about him, and, uh, in speaking to Russell on the phone, and as well as how he interviewed, uh, to me seems, uh, very well grounded and knowledgeable in regards to, uh, the labor situation, especially what will probably be coming before us in regards to, uh, any negotiations, especially in our economic situation right now. Um, and, uh, you know, I found the one interesting thing between both, I mean, I don't like, I, I like Kate, I thought she did all right. But I thought the one interesting thing was, Steve, when he asked, uh, you know, describe how to advocate for legal vision, that was unpopular, and they both gave pretty much the same answer, uh, just different communities. So obviously that, 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 the healthcare situation is definitely, uh, uh, made a stick-up point with, uh, with them. But that would go, I think, even the private industry, if somebody wanted to do that. So, um, with that said, so I guess we will move on to a vote. Uh, you guys all set?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, I moved that the board vote to make the annual appointment. Actually, you know something before I go on with that? Should we set a date in regards to how long this contractual agreement should be for, or how we?
Yeah, I mean, you, you may wanna keep it on the same annual appointment basis that you do all the other appointments. Just makes it easy to remember. Um, but, you know, regardless of which way you went, um, you know, you're only gonna have a short window of time before you have to, like, think about this again. So I, I just think it's easier if you keep everything on the same appointment schedule for yourselves going forward.
So.
June thirtieth.
Yeah, thinking of that, June thirtieth. So, uh, so put an end date of June thirtieth?
Yeah, then, then everything's on the same schedule.
All right, so we don't mess anything up regardless of the situation. Um, okay. So do we have to speak for that in regards to this? Or is that just gonna be, uh, known in regards to the end of this contract?
I think if you, they're gonna give you an engagement letter. And I think in the engagement letter, you ask them to make it effective through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six. And you'll give a, a notice when it comes down, time to asking for reappointment, and then you'll handle the reappointment process.
All right.
In the spring.
There won't be any harm in adding it to the motion.
No.
Right? So, all right. I moved that the board vote to make the annual appointment of, as Labor Council, uh, for the town of Marshfield to a law firm of Russell Dupere Law Firm. Do I have a second?
Second.
Aye?
Nay.
Aye.
Okay. Takes care of that.
You probably just might ask Charlie Sumner to contact them tomorrow.
Oh, I did too.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, um, let's take care of number ten, I think is hanging around besides four of them that involve Andrew. Uh, discussion and vote on vacancy and search for treasurer collector position. Uh, summary on this is Sean Strobel, tenant is resignation effective on November fifth, twenty twenty-five. Uh, we need to discuss and establish a process for interim and permanent treasurer collector. Uh, Charlie Sumner has proposed a plan to review with the select board. Uh, Charlie, can you, uh, share that plan with us, please?
Yes, sir. Uh, so obviously, the appointment is, uh, is under the jurisdiction of the select board. And I certainly appreciate and respect that. But I was thinking about the process that we're going to use. And, um, um, you know, first, I guess, in, in general, I'd like to recommend that we form a, a committee, and I'd like to serve on the committee. Um, I'd like to have the town accountant, the assessor, and, uh, the, your human service director on that committee. And I always like to have a member of the select board on. Um, so that way, you know, this process, um, is gonna take some time. And I assume, you know, with your geographic location, you'll receive several candidates. Um, you know, if, if, if you do it amongst yourself, it's gonna take a lot of time for the full board. And I think the interview process could be a little more, um, you know, thorough, if we can do it in a private setting. Of course, any candidates, we'll bring back as many candidates as you want. Uh, my recommendation always is that we'll bring back any candidate that is capable and competent to do the job for your community. A couple of the, um, um, process things that we would also include with this small working group, would, I'd wanna take a look at the current job description. I, I have looked at that quickly, and I, I think it's fine. Uh, but I do think there's probably a few changes that we might want to make. And those, once again, I would bring back, uh, to get the support, uh, of the select board. Um, the other things that we're dealing with, of course, is, um, in the interim, what are we gonna do? Um, so Kathleen is here, and we're really grateful to have her in a current position. Um, she's certified and capable of doing a lot of the current day-to-day work in that office. Uh, we have used, um, CLA in the past, um, Clifford, Larson and Anderson, and we're gonna need extra help. Um, so I have reached out to them. They've submitted a proposal, um, for consulting services. Um, so I also want permission to enter into a contract with CLA. Um, and the other thing is, I do have some other, um, you know, relationships with, um, retired treasurer collectors that might be able to step in and help. And so I think it's sort of all hands on deck, right? We use the resources that we have in-house. Um, CLA has, knows this organization, has worked with town officials here in a really productive manner. But if I can find some other retirees, sort of like me, who can step in and do some elements of the job, that'll be frankly cheaper than, uh, CLA. And we've talked to CLA about this. Then I would wanna continue to work on that, too. I've made a couple of phone calls, but I still have a lot more work to do on that. Um, so I think, um, maybe I'll just leave, leave it at that. And if there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. Oh, I'm sorry. We have, we're starting to work on an ad. Uh, I'd like to advertise, I, I wanted to wait till after tonight, of course, uh, but I'd like to get the advertisement out in the professional journals as quickly as possible.
All right, so, um, in regards to the people that you would like to have as a, uh, search committee, I guess you could say, uh, the town accountant, I mean, Meg LeMay, uh, human services director, Daniel Carrigan, and, uh, principal assessor, Emery Senart?
Yes.
Okay. And the select board, um, I'm available. I, I put myself in that position. Um, and then, uh, so with Sean gone, uh, I'm looking at, with Kathleen stepping into more of a, more than what she, her position is, I imagine, uh, she's gonna get a pay bump. And then CLA Financial Management Service, uh, we're gonna have to pay for them, obviously. And then, uh, interim treasurer collector, whatever we work out for a deal with him. So, uh, do we have, even with Sean stepping out, are we good in regards to covering those expenses? Uh, do you know? Have you looked into it?
Yeah, we've talked generally about it. And I think, you know, for the moment, we're okay. Depends on how long the search goes on, of course, and how much money we spend. But in the immediate, you know, situation, we're fine.
Okay. Um, that's the only thing I was wondering, if we were, if we needed extra funding, where are we gonna get that from?
Well, you know, there's, there's only a few options, right? And that's, um, really, we're not gonna call a special town meeting, uh, would be the reserve fund.
Okay. Uh, Meg, did you have anything to add to this?
No.
Okay. Um, I don't think I have anything else. Steve, you have any questions or comments on this?
Yes, you know, we've used CLA before, so they're familiar with the town, I would say, at this point, pretty significantly. And, you know, how, how it operates and how things work and, you know, process improvements. Um, and anytime you have a vacancy, right, your existing staff, everyone kind of temporarily slides up a slot to assume additional responsibilities. So, um, you know, Kathleen's done that before. You know, we've had vacancies at treasury before, where she's let up on an interim basis to assume some of those responsibilities. So just the question I had for Charles is, you know, while we're going through this process again, you know, is our existing staff that's temporarily sliding up a spot, do they have the authority to kind of execute the responsibilities that kind of need to be, that take place on a daily basis?
Yeah, under the current state law, um, you know, the current staff has the ability. And think about it, when your treasurer collector's on vacation or on leave, that's seamless, right? It works now. So state law currently provides that, um, delegation of authority, signature of authority.
That makes sense. So we're not at risk of any transactions being held up because there's not a signatory authority that hasn't been, you know, granted or approved or anything of that nature?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
You good?
Yes.
Trish?
I'll say.
Okay. Um, so I think this is gonna be, this, I'm looking at a big motion, I think, here. So, uh, so I think, let me see, I will, maybe we'll break it up. Uh, I will motion that, uh, we set up a search committee in, to find a treasurer collector. And that search committee will consist of, uh, a town accountant, a human resources director, a principal assessor, and a, a select board member, which will be me, and, uh, and the, in our interim TA, Charlie Sumner. Uh, you think that's all right? Stop for a motion, Bob?
Yeah, I think that's a good start.
Okay. Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Uh, so I will motion, um, that CLA Financial Management Service, um, be approved for the, a contract with the town of Marshfield. Should I put any dates or monetary things in there?
I think maybe just on terms negotiated by the town administrator. I think he can negotiate a reasonable agreement.
Okay. Uh, are the terms set forth by the interim town administrators, Charles Sumner?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, should I add anything else? Bob, Charles, in regards to any other motions for this?
Do you wanna approve, um, the rest of the plan was to ask Kathleen Maresco to serve in the role that Charles, Charles envisions for her, and then also to continue to explore the ability to bring in an outside help to, um, either offset the cost of CLA.
Okay, so Kathleen, uh...
I think, uh, maybe if I could, I think we'll use the current employee, uh, basis that we have. So I don't think I need any authorization relative to Kathleen. We'll honor, uh, any policies and procedures that we have in-house. The only other thing, um, that I would like would be authorization if I can hire some other temporary part-time services, um, to bring in someone to help out. So if you could authorize...
So are you looking?
Some authority for me to do that.
Are you looking to, uh, authority for, to pick somebody as interim? Or are you looking for something, or a firm?
No, this would be if I wanna bring in a retiree to do some very limited job functions. And it would really be on a, just, just like CLA, it'd be on a contract kind of...
Yeah, so you're looking to bring somebody, you're not looking to use a firm, you're looking to bring somebody on your own.
Yeah.
For you to, uh, pick for the time being.
And I might not even bring anybody in, but I just want the authority if I can...
Okay.
If I have some functions I wanna do, I can get someone to do them, to take the pressure off, um, Kathleen and the staff downstairs, and, and, and take some of those functions away from CLA, because it's cost-effective. I just want the ability to, to manage that.
All right, so we're all good with, uh, we don't need any motions in regards to Kathleen Maresco?
I don't believe I do.
Can I ask a question, though?
Yeah, if you wanna come up and speak. Yeah, if you wanna come up and speak.
I, I just, I have a question.
Can you come up? Thank you, Kathleen.
Thank you. My only question is this. We are in the middle of a couple of, um, billing cycles. And in order to commit a billing cycle, there has to be the name of a collector on the bill that goes out. We are also in the middle of tax takings. Tax taking is the one thing that cannot be signed off on by an assistant legally. I also cannot sign off on redemptions legally. So people are coming in to work with their tax titles. And at this point, for our new tax titles, we are ready to go to newspaper. In order to do that, there has to be the name of the person who is the collector of taxes, whether it's a treasurer collector or an interim. So I just want you to know that by not appointing at this time, we're just postponing all of that. The process will be postponed. We will not be able to move forward with the tax-taking process. And we have also just had David Capola send out many letters, um, to people that have been in tax title for a while about their next steps. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody's on the same page and everybody's aware of that.
So not...
Okay.
Really being familiar with that process. Where, are we, am I looking at, we, are you suggesting that we make somebody interim right now? Or what are we looking at?
I'm just telling you, I, I'm just telling you what's happened in the past, because in order to keep the day-to-day going, there has to be a name. There's a name on the checks, that's fine. I'm already the second, so I can automatically move up and sign the checks and do the payroll. But in order to send out bill commitments, there has to be the name of a collector of taxes on the bill. So someone has to be appointed, whether it's me or someone else. We cannot move forward with bill commitments, with the tax-taking. If we're gonna send out a bill, there's a name on the bill that says who's collecting the tax. It doesn't just say the town of Marshfield, there's a representative there. And what we don't wanna see happen is, in the interim of all this happening, we don't wanna postpone any funds coming into the town.
Okay, all right. So...
Does that make sense?
I, I, I think I get the picture right now.
I, I understand the issue with the tax title, and that, we have time on, there's no urgency with that. Uh, relative to the issue with the tax bill, Will, Meg and I will spend a little bit more time, but we do not think it has to be, there has to be an interim in place. But maybe we're wrong, and we have, we have a little bit of time to deal with that.
Okay, so let's, I would say that if a situation arises that we need to act, uh, just reach out to us three, and we'll convene a meeting.
Yeah. We have time. We're gonna be working to set the tax rate anyway. We've got a, a little bit of time before that, that effort's gonna happen anyway.
Great. Thank you, Kathleen.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, all right, so you just need, uh, we need a motion for you to bring in an interim treasurer collector is what you're looking for?
Uh, no, I just, no, if, uh, and right now, I'm trying to avoid that. But, um, I'm just saying, if I, if I wanna bring in some other consulting services, contract services, I just want authority to bring somebody in to do some special functions, so.
All right, so when you say contract, that's somebody outside of, like, CLA Financial Management Services?
That's right. It's not, not, no different than CLA, but just another party like that.
So, I'm trying to understand what you're saying. Is it gonna be the same as fi- financial management services, or is it gonna be, is it gonna be different?
It, it could be, but it's most likely gonna be a retired treasurer collector, not dissimilar than what you have with me.
All right, so let me ask you this, Mr. Charles. Uh, how should I word the motion that that would fit the description of what you're looking?
So I think if you could move to authorize the town administrator to enter into, um, contract, award a contract for additional financial management services, uh, that would be broad enough to give me a lot of flexibility.
So motion the interim town administrator to award a contract to...
Other, um, financial, um, services.
So how about another financial services, uh, service?
Contract.
Financial service?
Yep.
To award contract to another financial service?
Yep.
Did I cover it?
Organization or individual. Yep.
Yeah. The, the way I understand it is, it might be cheaper for us to do it that way than to use CLA. So I think you wanna give Charles the ability to hire somebody cheaper.
No, no, I, I, I'm good with that. I'm just saying, are you happy with the motion?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
You're giving me a lot of flexibility. I appreciate it.
Okay, all right. Um, Steve, any questions or comments on it?
No.
Trish?
I'll say.
Okay. Um, I'm gonna motion that the interim town administrator, Charles Sumner, uh, authorized to award a contract to another financial services entity. Do I have a second?
I'd say person or entity, because it means...
All right, services to, to entity or a person?
Second.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
All right, thank you.
So... So... Let's start off with number two. Andrew, if you don't mind coming up to the microphone.
Did you want to do the override conversation first and do Andrew last?
Oh, yeah, my apologies. Uh, that's why I forgot the school roof there.
Sorry, Andrew.
Number five, uh-
I had warned Andrew.
Yeah, well, oh, yeah, she did.
Yes, you did.
All right, that's why I forgot about the override. Uh, I appreciate that, Charles. All right, so there's a letter here from Charles Sumner. The purpose of this memorandum is to provide some information to select board relative to the town of Marshfield's Martinson Elementary School Roof Replacement Project. I have attached a copy of the October 29th, 2025 letter from the Madison School Building Authority's notice that the Martinson Elementary School replacement, school roof replacement project is approved in the estimate amount of $3,473,000 and $493,000. Pursuant to the MSBA's accelerated repair program, the town has 90 days to acquire and certify local approval for the appropriation and all other necessary votes or approvals. The first step was the appropriations article on October 20th, 2025, special time E. The next critical step is to call a special town election to seek voter approval on Proposition 2 and 1/2 debt exclusion ballot question to pay for the principal and interest expense for this project over the life of the loan. An exclusion increases the amount of property taxes the community may raise for a limited or temporary period of time in order to fund specific projects. The amount the exclusion may be raised in addition to the community's levy limit, it does not increase the community's levy limit, nor become part of the base for calculating future levy, future years levy limits. Proposition 2 and 1/2 questions are placed on the election ballot by vote of the local appropriating body, which are situated by the select board and requires a 2/3 vote. Uh, so, the saying that, Charles, do you have anything else to add on?
Uh, so I have met with your town clerk, talked about a date, if you choose to have a special town election. And she has recommended the date of January 10th, 2026. And I think that when we talked about this date, you know, relative to the work that has to go into putting a special election warrant together, is just, it's sort of recognizing that Thanksgiving and Christmas holidays are coming up. And so, you know, I know you typically hold your town elections on a Saturday. And so, even if we could pull off all the work necessary to do it before Christmas, it would be just before Christmas. And I just don't think it makes a lot of sense from a public relations standpoint. So the January 10th date is a, is a good date. One, there are costs associated with a special town election. And your town clerk has given me an estimate of $16,300 to pay for the costs for the election. Additionally, the, some of the equipment that you use for your, um, elections is outdated and no longer supported by your vendor. So we need to upgrade that equipment and that cost is $9,560. So we're gonna need, um, to get a reserve fund transfer if you choose to call a special election for those two amounts. So we need a vote of the board to support the application for that funding. I did include, actually, your town treasurer put together some schedules for the debt costs for this roof project if, at the rate of 4.25%, but I just wanted to give you a sense of what the costs are going forward. Uh, we did have a, the superintendent and we, and, uh, your business manager and Bob and I had a, with Meg, had a meeting today to talk about some of the logistics involved, um, with this process. And I think the other thing that would have to occur is even if you agree to have a special town election on January 10th, we had talked about at the last meeting, a week ago, of, this is a, um, a narrow window and it's gonna really be important that we get bids out as soon as possible. Contractors are lining up their work for next summer, so the sooner we get the bid specs and the bid advertisement out, it's more advantageous for your community. So I think our goal would be to start that process immediately. We do have funding that was already provided town meeting, by town meeting for the design costs. There's extra money in that appropriation still, so we would hit the ground running to get those bid specs and bids out as soon as possible. Now, what that timeframe would be, I'll let the school department talk about that, even if they have it. But, uh, at this moment, what, but, um, I think that's sort of the critical issue. We have reviewed the schedule and the process with, um, the school building authority and it's fine that we start this effort in advance of the second appropriation. If you look at your town meeting vote from October 20th, that funding that was authorized by town meeting was conditional upon a 2 and 1/2 override ballot question. So your voters at town meeting said, yeah, you can spend the money, but you have to have a special election, you have to get a debt exclusion. Now, if, you know, I know there was, there's been some comments about whether we need to call, um, a special election to get a debt exclusion. And if you choose not to do it and you still want to get this project done in the summer of 2026, it means you're gonna have to call a special town meeting to amend the authorization that you currently have. And I think that would really be challenging from a timing perspective to get this project going. Now, I was talking to Eric today about this a little bit when we were just going over prep for the agenda. And, and, you know, my recommendation always is if you have a major capital project, um, you know, my instinct has always been to get a debt exclusion to support it. Now, if Meg and I have a lot of work to do to really analyze the town's fiscal capacity for FY '27, we're already behind. Uh, we have it, we've had some conversations, we are gonna work to catch up on that. But let's say you call a special town election for January 10th and voters approve the debt exclusion. Do you still have to raise that money in the tax levy? The answer is no. If you, um, as you put your fiscal spending plan together for FY '27, if you have enough revenue to support this project using local receipts or free cash or just the levy as it exists today, you, you don't have to spend all of your levy authority. But, you know, so you can make a business decision later on based upon the conditions as we analyze them and present them to you in the next couple of months, next several weeks, actually. But, um, you know, I think right now, we can't say to you, you have the capacity to fund this without a debt exclusion. So our recommendation is to, is to vote to have a debt exclusion. Use this time over the late fall and end, early winter period to make a determination whether you need to spend all of the taxing authority that your community might give to you. I think that's it. I'm sure others have some comments as well. And if I missed anything, please jump in.
What, what would happen if it fails? I'm, I'm just curious.
Okay, well, if the override fails, then you've got a real overwhelming problem because you're not gonna get the authorization that you need from your community in the timeline that school building assistance. And you're gonna fall off the list and, and they're gonna give this money to some other eligible community. So you're gonna start that process all over again. So I really, you know, you think it's, if it fails, you're putting in jeopardy the 49.1% reimbursement rate from the Commonwealth of Mass. So I, I really, I think it would be really devastating fiscal, um, situation for the town of Marshfield.
I would, uh, I would look at that as upon our discussion today, as well as I chatted up Meg, is that as much as I'm not for this debt exclusion and, and people have been reaching out to me, you know, you gotta fund it another way and all that, we just, we haven't had time to sit down and figure that all out right now. And upon our discussion, uh, you know, I was like, well, look, there's no, no issue with us putting on the ballot. And then if it fails, well, there's a problem there. But if it passes, the only is that we put it on, we got between now and X amount of time to see if we can go through the operating budget and see if we can come up with a plan to fund this without going into a debt exclusion. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So I think, in my opinion, at least putting it to a vote, let the citizen vote for it, is one thing. But I also think that, uh, going forward, especially right now, is that there could be a possibility that this thing does fail. And we should consider a backup plan on this, uh, in regards to what we're gonna do. Whether it's, we need to call a special time meeting right away, or we gotta scrape together funds, um, to offset the cost of this, in my opinion. So, um, Steve, did you have any comments or questions?
Yes, so town meeting on October 20th voted to move this project forward. So we have the administrative task of picking an election date for the town to vote, you know, at the ballot. And it seems like January 10th is the proposed date to, to move forward. So that's what I think is before us. Town meeting said, you know, we want this to move forward and let the town at large vote at the ballot whether they want to fund this as a debt exclusion. So in my view, town meeting said move forward and it's just up to us to pick a date. You know, that's how I view things right now. And I know there's been a lot of conversation about, you know, sometimes debt exclusion and then an override is kind of used interchangeably. They both are only permitted for a limited period of time. They're temporary solutions and they have to be for a specific purpose. So the difference is that typically an override is operational budget in nature. You have to specify what it is for. And a debt exclusion is typically for a capital project, but they're both for a limited duration of time and for a specific purpose. And Marshfield doesn't exist in a vacuum, right? It's every community across the entire state that is facing budget crunches. And we heard both attorney Federoff and attorney Dupere touch on Proposition 2 and 1/2, which is a legacy from the 1980s, which means that you cannot increase your property tax levy by more than 2 and 1/2% each year. And the idea was to try to rein in and control government spending. But the problem that we're seeing in today's environment is that you have all these inflationary costs that are outpacing and exceeding that 2 and 1/2%. You have healthcare costs, you have energy costs, you have construction costs, and then just general inflation that you're trying to keep up with. So it's not necessarily mismanagement that is causing all these budgetary pressures. It's just trying to keep up with inflation and the cost at which goods and services are increasing. So the Massachusetts Municipal Association, of which we are a member, did a study very recently about these inflationary pressures that communities are facing. And you heard attorney Dupere mention Duxbury specifically, you know, right next door, very recently, you know, re- tried to tackle an override. So the Mass Municipal Association, the numbers that they crunched accounting for inflation, across the state municipalities from 2010 to 2022, real spending has only increased by 0.6% on an annual basis. Now, with Proposition 2 and 1/2, during the 2010s, we were okay because your costs were only going up 1 to 2%. But from COVID onward, your costs have been going up an average of 3%. So it's really just kind of basic math and inflationary pressures that are causing these crunches where your real costs are outpacing your revenue growth. And that's why this tension exists. And that's one of the reasons why that we cannot fund this multimillion-dollar roof project within our existing budget. So we're putting it to the voters to say, do you want to fund and finance this as a debt exclusion? Because we are restricted from, right, Proposition 2 and 1/2 by, you know, from increasing the taxable levy on your property taxes. So that's kind of where we stand, you know? And the MSBA, the Massachusetts School Building Authority, which is the program that we're applying through to finance this project, right, they're reimbursing us at a clip of 49%. Uh, they voted on October 29th to fund and approve this project to move forward and that's at least $3.4 million, right? So now the ball is in our court. That money that they're gonna give us is contingent on local approval, meaning town meeting, which we've already done, and now voting on the ballot, which is the next step that we are trying to vote on and set up tonight. So that's where we stand at the moment. And again, that money's contingent on this local approval. So the ballot vote is the last step. And I would say as well, right, we've had the opportunity to interview and ask questions of the engineering firm. We had Ed Dubois, who we all appointed 3-0 to the advisory board. His firm has built multiple schools and he was nice enough to have his staff put the time in for free to analyze this project. And, you know, I know there's been conversation about the two different roofing material options. In his mind, he found that they were equal and just through the discounts you get through bulk purchasing that the cost was the same. So now I know tonight's conversation, it's about, you know, whether we should do a debt exclusion. So I just kind of wanted to put all that in context. But in my view, the will of the voters was that we move this forward to the next step and let the town vote at large whether they want to fund this leaking roof with a debt exclusion. And we're on a ticking clock where we want to make sure we get those bids out because you want to get your bid in when people are still looking for jobs as opposed to at the tail end when they're all booked up and then they can be a little bit more choosy and you're probably gonna pay a higher rate. And we're on a timetable to get this done over the summer of 2026. And, you know, we had Ed Dubois from the advisory board tell us that if we miss the window, that it's, you know, with inflation, it's gonna be another $3 million. And, you know, I think that's a, it's an untenable situation to put the town in. So from my perspective, we have a simple administrative task before us tonight to put this on the ballot for January 10th.
I just need clarification. Is, I, I do, I think there is a difference between override and debt exclusion. Is there, is there a difference?
Yeah, I, yeah, there is. I mean, so a debt exclusion is temporary?
Yeah.
It's, it's the principal and interest payments for the life of the loan. So that's, and once that loan that-
With the override?
That is paid off, an override, a general override is a permanent increase in your levy.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
You know, but there are, there are all kinds of overrides. There's capital overrides and stabilization fund overrides and debt exclusion. So there's a lot of vehicles.
But they stay on the books though.
But a general override stays on the book.
Yeah.
A capital override, if you're gonna buy a fire engine, goes away when-
So it's like a debt exclusion, what you're saying?
Yeah, or if, yeah, sometimes towns-
So there are different overrides?
Sometimes you get an override for a dump truck for $100,000, you know?
Um, because I know that's when I'm going back for the situation, everybody trying to explain override, debt exclusion.
Yeah.
People, so, uh, like Steve, I agree with you in spending. The thing is that spending, I think, at all local levels has, uh, gotten out of hand. Um, and now we're seeing the consequences of it. Uh, some of it is out of our control, especially when it comes to the maintenance of the buildings. And, uh, the unfortunate part is that previous select boards going back probably, this should have gone back many, many years, that I don't think we set up a fund where we should have put money in to offset these situations in regards to roofs and whatever else like that. And hopefully, us three together, we'll establish that. And hopefully, maybe we won't see the, the fruits of it within a couple of years of our terms. But the whole thing is that going forward, that it'll benefit the town in the long run, in my, in my opinion. As well as other things I hope that we implement to set the town forward that, um, that'll benefit the town in the long run and set us on a course. The other part of it too is that, um, our state legislature, I think the state needs to get, gets its own spending under control. And they need to start kicking in more money than what they do to the state, than what they do in regards to the cherry sheets they hand, hand out to us. Um, and, you know, if you look at the amount of, I think, what somebody told me in regards to the, um, state's rainy day fund, that collects a massive amount of interest every year that it could be shelling out just to the community itself to offset some of these expenses in regards to it. So I look at the state, I think the state and those who supposedly represent us need to do a better job in regards to how they manage the state. And I think at the local level, I think- And I think at the local level, I think we need to do a better job in regards to how we manage the budget and hopefully, um, this upcoming budget year, um, we're gonna do our best to try to treat everybody fair, but also, um, really put our foot down the spending and make sure that it's needed and hopefully maintain, um, some stability in the town for all of our residents.
Um, and, and to, to your point, um, you know, accounting for real spending, like with inflation from 2002 onward, the amount of money that the state has given like back to the, to municipalities in terms of unrestricted state aid is down 25%. So that's like another source of the budgetary crunches. We're not getting as much money back from the state as we used to. So again, like in real dollars and counter inflation, municipal spending's been averaging 0.6%. The state's been at 2.8%. But again, in terms of real dollars, like from 2002 to where we are today, unrestricted state aid, which is the money you can spend, spend most flexibly, is down 25%.
Yeah, I mean, I, I look at like, I think, uh, my short time, I think, uh, the town for the state aid to the, uh, general fund is roughly $2 million. And my, my thought is that, uh, I think I mentioned this last year, is that, uh, we shouldn't be incorporating that to the budget. That should be a separate item altogether because that number changes, we never know. And, um, and that should be off to the side, not incorporated in because we don't, like next year, that number could drop significantly because of the way things are going right now. It's the same with the schools when they get their, their, their numbers. My belief is the schools should be even incorporating that money into their, into their budget because they don't know because next year, depending on what the state does, they could have a significant drop off and they're gonna have to make tough decisions. So, you know, I think, I think everybody's gonna do a better job in regards to where their money, uh, the money they're getting and then how they're gonna put it into their whole financial plan in, in my, in my, in my opinion. Um, so Trish, did you have anything to add? Are you all set? Correct, Charles?
So the only thing I wanted to say that's, it's relative to a comment you made at the beginning is Meg and I are gonna start in earnest working on the town's financial forecast. We're late, um, sort of in my mind, these are things that I would sort of start in, in late summer and work with the town accountant, uh, through September and have a discussion with the select board in October. Those are gonna be in November, right? And then we've, uh, gotta get this budget moving forward. But anyway, uh, just, so in the, in the next month, let's say, we'll be able to present the select board with a snapshot, not to the level or degree that I would prefer, but we'll do the best we can in a narrow window to really start to give you a sense of what's coming over the horizon, um, in terms of, you know, your local receipts, retiring debt, you know, there might be some opportunities that you have quite a bit of non-excluded debt that's retiring, we're gonna analyze that. So we'll have more information, uh, for, for your community, uh, we just need some more time.
Yeah, I mean, it's, uh, when you, you guys come to, uh, I can't see, put a meeting together, uh, keep me informed because if I can't, I'd like to attend it.
Yep, that'd be great.
So, um, Meg, did you have anything to add onto this conversation? Superintendent Sullivan, Assistant Superintendent, uh, Miller, do you guys have anything to add onto this conversation?
Well, I think Mr. Sumner's sum did up really well, but I don't know if you want to have a timeline, there was a question. The only question I have is you had mentioned
Hey, can you two come up?
You wanna come up?
Yeah, please, just so. I was watching the meetings, the advisory board meeting, I'm like, I can hear yous, but the only is that I really
No, it makes sense, yeah, sorry, thank you, Rick. Thank you for having us. I was just saying, I think the summary was right on the money about where we are. We had met today, just to kinda give some, an overview. Assistant Superintendent Miller can talk about the timeline. My question is, we did wanna move the funds immediately to start the bidding process. I just wanted to make sure that if there was anything that you need to do, um, Mr. Chairman, here to allow that to happen, that we made sure that happened. And I'm not sure if, if that needs a vote or anything in that regard.
No, I think, I think all, uh, all for us to do is that we're just gonna set the date.
Okay.
Uh, when this is gonna happen, which I believe, I can, I think confident that all three of us will do that. And then, you know, something, uh, to answer those questions for everybody that's concerned about debt exclusion, if there's a way around it, um, that's gonna come down to us figuring out what we have
Yeah.
Going forward, but the most important thing is set the date.
Valid date.
Much like Mr. Das, he said, is that the town permitted us a time meeting to do, which, uh, we'll do and, um, and then we'll, we'll see if we can figure something out without doing a debt exclusion if it's possible.
We appreciate all of that. We, we'd like to get the bidding going, um, with the MSBA, uh, actively because of the reasons that we're out
Uh, my only, my only thinking is that there's a possibility this could get shot down. All right, so the whole thing is that, in my opinion, and it's unfortunate, but I don't think it'd be a waste of time, is that you all should get together and then keep us in the loop, but what's our contingency plan if it does?
And, um, relative to the question that the superintendent asked, you know, I, I, I mean, Meg, I want you to correct me if I'm wrong, but, um, is right now the art, there's an article, it has funding in it
Mm-hmm.
And you have authorization to spend that. So to answer that question.
That, that's
Relative to, um, you know, sort of transparency with your community, we wanted to let the select board know that it's our intention to start working on this tomorrow. We will be spending money out of that current appropriation to get this project out to bid. Can
Are you talking about the $300,000 that's left in the
Yeah, they won't, they won't, they won't spend anywhere near that, but
I, I don't know, but that, I just wanna make sure what we're counting, what we're talking about.
That's it, for the feasibility study.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it was a, it was a $1 million article and we've spent about $300,000 to this point. It all told, uh, through the 60% construction documents, it'd be about $750,000 on there. No, in total, so there would be about $250,000 remaining in the end.
Okay.
If we go all the way through. What, what, the, the real big question was whether or not we could continue, um, all the way through bidding without a, uh, project funding agreement with the MSBA. That's the official document that, that, uh, puts this all into place. And we just got word this morning from the MSBA that we can, we can go ahead and bid the project without an executed project funding agreement, but it's at the town and district's own risk. So, um, but that's exactly what you're talking about. If, if the debt, debt exclusion did not, did not pass and we move forward with the bidding before that, it's, it's probably gonna be with the January 10th, it's going, we're about on the same path right now, it's a large schedule. Um, the original bidding was set to go into the central register on January 14th. So it's
Close.
Right about the same time. So we, if we have a January 10th vote and if it doesn't, if it does fail, there's a potential we could pull that back from that bidding process or we can move ahead. I mean, that's, that's a decision hopefully we can come up with by that, by that time.
And there's a few things that have to be done after the January 10th vote, uh, and we just don't wanna get behind in that bidding process. So we want the same shot as all the other projects that are out there to make sure we get the best contractor and the best product.
I think we all agree with you on that. Like I said, the unknown is that roof vote. That's one of my concerns, especially if you're saying that if you go full with the bidding process and then all of a sudden that vote fails, we, we, we're on the hook.
We're on the hook. I, I just wanted to be transparent about that.
That's what I'm looking at.
What the timeline, what the timeline suggests is that if it did fail, we could pull back the bid if we, if we, if we deem that necessary, if there was no other solutions at that point in time. But we would have put that $750,000 together into the documents, which we can obviously
Okay, so what you're saying is that you're just gonna put the bid out there, but, um, you're not gonna sign anything to commit ourselves that there's a
Correct.
A winning
Yeah, I think that's the smart
But we don't, we don't wanna wait totally till after June 10th to do anything
Okay.
Because we'll fall back.
But either way, the roof needs to get done. So the whole thing is that even if it fails and even with the bid or whatever it's at that, we, I think we still should have a contingency plan in case
Yes.
It does fail, what we're gonna do because the roof certainly does need to get done.
Yeah.
So.
And I think, I think Charlie touched upon it a little bit, the, it just, the debt exclusion, you know, I don't think anybody wants to pay more in taxes, um, we're, we're residents, that's, I was, obviously goes without saying, but the, the average, the average Marshall home value is 758,000 right now and the average annual cost, uh, with, with this debt exclusion impact is, at the highest point is $30.35 a year.
That's what, this debt exclusion.
Correct, yeah.
But we got like four or five others that are still on the books, right?
Sorry.
We have like four or five others that are still on the books at the moment, right? So the whole thing is that, and then we got potentially two more roofs coming up, that may need to get done.
Yeah, well, that, that'll be on our capital plan, uh, it's been on our capital plan
And those aren't
The last couple of years.
Those aren't replacements.
These, they're a little, they're, they're, um, more of a restoration and, but they're still in the, you know, they're in the seven figures.
Yeah.
You know, 1.5 to 1.8 million.
Everything going up, we don't know, I mean, it could be, like I said, oh, it's just gonna be a restoration, but it could cost us
No, it's
All it's just to redo it.
Didn't mean to say that.
No, no, I, I got that, I got that.
Yeah.
So the whole thing is that, yeah, I mean, this one only adds $30 to a $700,000, but we have like five other debt exclusions running. And then we had an override that happened back in 2007 or whatever else. Uh, so then we probably got other things that may have unknown things that come up, to be honest, that we may need to address, that may require, so it's starting to add up. The whole thing is that everybody needs to, I think, do their part and figure out, hey, how are we gonna handle the situation? And, and that's, that was
That's, that's, I think that's, that's why this restoration plan on, on the Governor Winslow and Daniel Webster roofs is, that's, uh, you know, working with Fred Russell, that our, it's, it's our hope, the MSBA just started approving those too for reimbursement as well. Um, it, it'll be two years down the line, which is a little touchy, so we're gonna present a plan to the capital budget for a really, a mini restoration of the worst part of the Daniel Webster building for, uh, roughly $200,000 to get it two years down the line. So then we can hopefully go back to the MSBA and say, okay, we, we want this restoration that's gonna cost 1.7, 1.8 and get 50% reimbursement on that. And at that point, I think $900,000 to the town could be a borrow, uh, with, without having to increase taxes. So I think we're doing a part to try to, try to minimize this as much as possible.
I mean, that and anything else that you think is coming down the pike, let's, you know, let's figure it out, you know?
I think
Do you have anything, Jim?
Well, just, I guess, just in closing, I mean, this is the best chance the town has to do this project at the lowest cost.
Yeah.
With this debt exclusion. Otherwise, in my mind, you start all over again and you, you, you're gonna fall to the bottom of a cycle and you have to, you're gonna have to go through
Yeah.
All delay cost and program. This, this is just gonna cost taxpayers a lot more
It's almost a 10% escalation rate, an annual escalation rate.
I think, I think all of us here realize that. But the whole thing is that some residents, towns, and it could be a majority that come to vote.
Yeah.
I gotta say that, you know something? Go find another way, you know, that's what I'm saying. We better start thinking about another way just in case that does happen because, um, you know, we could say, well, you're the one who failed it at the ballot, but the whole thing is that they're gonna say, well, you didn't have a contingency plan. You could, this could very well happen. So the whole thing is that we're gonna, we should have a contingency plan because, uh, if it does fail, uh, we, others may say, point to those that voted no on it, but the whole thing is those that said no, we're gonna say, hey, you knew where we stood, um, and you should have a, a backup plan, uh, just in case. So that's on them for not having a backup plan. So the whole thing is that, my thing is that let's have a backup plan just in case. And you know something? We get the debt exclusion, it doesn't mean, necessarily mean we can't work things out, uh, to not have to implement that, you know? So I'm all for setting the date.
Thank you.
You know, I just look at the, uh, the date's good, sure it works out for other people in other areas this time what they're looking for in regards to the date being set. But, uh, you know something? Uh, we'll see what happens at the end of this week in regards to that. So, uh, Steve, are you all set? Do you have anything else to add or anything like that?
Ready to vote.
Okay, Trish?
I'm good.
All right, Charles, you all good?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Steve? Superintendent Sullivan, I mean, uh, Tom and Superintendent Sullivan, you guys all set?
Certainly, I will.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Bob, good?
Yep.
Meg?
Everybody good?
All right, um.
Uh, one more thing?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Why not?
My wife's probably watching this meeting.
Uh, let's see here, all right, so I got a motion, but let me ask, let me, uh, put the, read the proposed debt exclusion question for the town of Marshville. Is this gonna be it, Bob? Is this, is this, this language changing, do we know of?
No.
This is, this is, this is the question right here.
That's, I came up with the same language that the schools had from bond council, so it's the same language.
All right, we have to inform everybody that by law, the, the amount cannot be in this.
Yeah, it, it's because we've already done the appropriation, now we're just looking for the debt authorization.
But we're gonna, are we gonna post the, um, the, the town article with the, with the amount on it?
The ballot can't
Location?
The ballot can't, but we could put out general information with the amount that's already been appropriate.
Yeah, I know the ballot can't, but can we, like, when people go to vote, at least have the, uh, the information?
I think we could have an informational flyer that says what's actually factually happened.
Okay.
But we just, on the ballot has to be blank.
Okay, so the proposed debt exclusion question for the town of Marshville, shall the town of Marshville, uh, be allowed to be exempt from the provisions of proposition two and a half, so-called, the amounts required to pay for the bond issued in order to pay for the cost of the roof replacement at the Martinson Elementary School, 257 Forest Street, Marshville, Mass. 02050, including all cap, costs incidental or related there too. And it's marked, you either vote yes or you vote no. So, um, the motion, as put forward, I move that the board vote to approve the wording of the proposed ballot questions submitted by bond council and town council relative to the proposed debt exclusion and the Martinson Elementary School roof and to set a local election date of Saturday, January 10th, 2026. Do I have a second?
Second.
Aye.
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 Thank you, everybody. All right, now I think we can move on to
Andrew, you're awake.
Andrew, I know.
I'm not.
Stuart, did you do the playground?
I'm ready.
Oh, thanks.
What is it?
Not yet.
Did you wanna do the playground inspector before you?
Well, I, I involve
Oh, Andrew's involved in that.
Yeah.
Okay.
That was, uh, Andrew has a, a matter on that.
We're just, we're ending with multiple
Oh, Andrew.
Items here.
Trying to be efficient, I guess you could say. So, uh,
You had a great one.
You could do the meeting minutes quickly too and then it's just Andrew.
Oh, yeah, you know, something that's a good call. Um, actually, yeah, let's just do that real quick. Uh, are you guys all good with the meeting minutes of October 2025?
Yep.
Yep.
Um, I move that the board vote to approve the draft meeting minutes from the October 2025 select board meeting, uh, do I have a second?
Second.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, beautiful, got that out of the way. All right, so executive session, that'll be at the end. All right, discussion with building commission on property at 655 Ocean Street and potential vote to authorize funding to secure removed structure. Uh, summary, home has been abandoned, there is $28,000 plus and backed due taxes and There is twenty eight thousand plus in back due taxes, and the town has a tax lien on tax lien on the property, and you'll be seeking funds to board up and secure the premises and to place a lien on the premises to recover the cost of the work. So I went and visited the property. It looks like somebody drove through the front of the house. It's all pushed in. So I do, I guess, have you have you stepped inside the house?
Not since June.
So recent, not today, but recently this year?
Well, I haven't, no, because I, so we have the Fourth Amendment, and I just can't just go onto people's property.
All right, I get that. So do we know what the structural integrity of is?
Well, I mean, we did a structural inspection when the accident happened, when we removed the vehicle.
How long ago was that?
That was June second was when.
Oh, is this year that happened?
June second of this year, that house was struck by a vehicle. The fire department and police department responded to it. So, yeah, we did an assessment on it at that point. There really was no, you know, imminent structural failure. Yes, there was a car went through the front of of it, but it it wasn't gonna fall down.
Well, let me clarify myself, because I can see where you what you're talking about, not to say that you're wrong, but the house, the whole house seems to be open for a while there. So I was just sure is the rest of the house okay? I mean, it looks like it just by appearances, but do you know if the rest of the house is structurally sound?
The rest of the house is certainly structurally sound, as far as I am aware. We really only evaluated the damage, so all structures are, you know, basically assumed to be in compliance until found otherwise, essentially.
So Bob, what is it gonna take for the town to, what do we need? I know we're gonna still gonna board it up, but what about acquiring the property and then?
It's it's.
Make an assessment on it, I guess.
Well, acquiring the property is a lot more time consuming and expensive than what we're talking about right now. But what Andrew's looking for is some authorization to make the premises secure and border.
I get that all that, but I'm just saying.
So one of the things you heard Ms. Maresco talk about before was the tax title. This is one of those properties, but the law has changed on foreclosing tax titles now. And when you foreclose a tax title, you have to go through an extended process. And when you complete the sale, you have to do an appraisal, and then you have to return the excess equity back to the property owner afterwards. And we can't find this property owner right now, according to what Andrew's been telling me. We've been sending them notices, you've got a problem property, and they I think they've gone four or five years without paying taxes. The owner may be deceased and maybe not have relatives. We don't we don't know yet.
Yeah, I haven't found any evidence that he's deceased, but he does appear to be an, I think, ninety-year-old man who lives in Lynn. It's under his trust. He is the the owner of the trust. So again, part of this would potentially be authorizing Constable or some working with the Lynn Police Department or something to track down the and and serve this person with some sort of notice as far as that goes.
Okay.
But we've kind of exhausted our ability, as far as the building department, to find this individual responsible. And so at this point, they're in violation of match general law in the building code for failure to adhere to the notice of violation that they were ordered to make the safe, make the site safe and secure.
So have we got the upon approval of this, Andrew, what's what's our process in regards to?
Well, I think I think ultimately Andrew's gonna have to make an assessment with some other professionals as to whether the structure is unsafe and and needs to be taken down.
There's a couple, there's.
But I'm just talking about when we authorize Andrew to secure the property for the town.
Yes.
Because like Andrew was saying is that he says, you can't be, you can't just walk onto somebody's property, I guess, and assess it. So the whole thing is that when Andrew's, we approve it, do we have to have another process or a meeting in regards to what are we gonna do about finding this person and then potentially acquiring this property and making a determination on it? I mean, what are we looking at?
I think that's beyond the scope of tonight. I don't think you should try to get into that tonight. I think you just wanna.
Well, I'm not trying to get into it. I'm just saying, should we have a meeting on it? Do we have to have a discussion on it?
I can explain the process.
I think if Andrew explains it, then it might answer your question. If he doesn't, then I'll come back and jump in.
So essentially, what I'm looking for now is just the authorization from the select board so that I I can legally enter onto the property, right, in the name of public safety. And that way, we can go in there and we can do work on that person's house, essentially, to make it safe, so nobody else can go in there. So we're we're in the name of public safety, we're as a public body saying, authorizing us to go onto somebody's private property and 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 do things on their property, right? So that's kind of the reason why it's gotta get done from this disposition. So once we've done that, then there are provisions for us to renumer, you know, get remuneration and 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 get money back for doing that, you know, to recoup our losses. But then also, we can begin to process this fine on a daily basis as well. Now, that finding on a daily basis is really what establishes, you know, the town being able to kind of turn that into more of a taking thing, right? So now what the the next step in that law is once somebody does not adhere to to our notices and we have to take the next steps, the 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 next part is we create a survey. We do a survey of the of the property, and that includes like a disinterested party, the police chief, the fire chief, and I believe like the town engineer to do a survey of the property, determine whether it's structurally sound, whether we need to demolish it, what what steps we need to take as a town to make sure that that property is safe to the general public. Again, this is where it gets difficult, because we're talking about a nonconforming house on a nonconforming property in a flood zone on a barrier beach. We start doing that, we're, you know, and we remove a house. Now we're that the ability to reconstruct, if we if it's not done within two years, is lost forever on that property. We get into some really wild legal stuff there for the town to to kind of be aware of. So that's why, you know, especially with a person who's ninety years old, we can't get in touch with them. Private property rights have kind of taken a slower approach to this to this one as we go along. But now, you know, I think we're at a position where we can legally start to take steps to, like you said, potentially move into a position where if the town ends up having to take the property, we will be able to do so legally.
Yeah, it's all, I mean, I think it'd be no brain for all of us to authorize you to do whatever work. Because the whole thing is that, yeah, all right, we did the work, but the house is still there in that condition. What as a town, what do we need to do to further this the situation? I know, find the potential owner of it, if that's possible. But if we can't, then what do we do?
And I can bring that before the select board is.
Okay.
Again.
All right. Steve, you got any questions?
Yeah, I mean, he's just looking for authority to board up and secure the premises. You don't have teenagers find their next cool hangout spot or.
I know, right?
Posees in or moves up. So I think it's pretty straightforward. I mean, your your long-term question, right, it's like in Happy Gilmore, when Grandma was behind on her back taxes, so they eventually auctioned it off. We've done that before too, when we can't find an owner or a relative in the will. Like years ago, somewhere in the Marshfield Hills, you know, we auctioned off a house, and then we put that money into certified free cash, and we were able to use that for capital projects. So in terms of the long game, like that's something that is on the table. But, yeah, right now, we're just looking to kind of board it up.
No, I'm good.
All right. Anything else to add? Andrew?
No, I've just that I've already spoken with facilities Fred Russell, and he's, you know, as soon as you guys are able to authorize it, he's gonna contact Service Master tomorrow and get a quote from them and get working on it.
You know, something that's that's the other question. How are we funding this? Do we know?
Well, I think, yeah, I don't know either. I think what we'll do is we'll, if you authorize this work, we'll work with Service Master or some other vendor to get some pricing. I'll review that with Meg to see if we have a mechanism. If not, we'll have to come up with a plan to present to the board at a future meeting.
Okay.
Let's let's see what that cost is.
Yeah, so I was wondering, I was like, all right, it's another funding issue here that we gotta take care of, so.
Hopefully, it'll be modest.
Yeah, it should be pretty modest, you know. It's really gonna be two by fours and some plywood, you know, taking care of it. Like, it's it's not in danger of collapse, in my opinion, you know, at this moment. So it's really just gonna be boarding it up and securing it.
All right, so here's the motion. I move that the board votes authorize the building commissioner to employ a contractor to board up and or secure the property at six five five Ocean Street if he determines that the premises so require and to authorize the placement in force of a lien to recover the cost of such work. Do I have a second?
Second.
Aye.
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 Thank you. All right. Number two, okay.
I have number seven.
Yep, thank you, Bob. Discussion and vote on fee waiver request for eight twenty four Maraine Street, two hundred Joseph Drive Back Way and one sixty seven Forest Street. I you know, I don't know where these properties are. Is this from you, this fee waiver? I'm under the impression it is.
I mean, it's from our office. The there are town projects that are requesting building permits, and, you know, our procedure is anytime a town project is basically receiving a building permit, they have to pay for it. I can't waive the fees the select board has.
No, 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 I I get all that, but what what are the addresses? Do you know, eight twenty four Maraine Street, what is the the project for that? Do you know? What's the location?
Eight twenty four Maraine Street, I believe, is gonna be T Rock Gardens over here. So that's Marshfield Housing Authority.
So you think it's T Rock?
Yeah, I'm pretty certain.
And then two hundred Joseph Drive Back Way?
That's gonna be the Harbor Master Building. I believe that's the removal of the ATM, maybe.
Yeah, probably.
And then one sixty seven Forest Street?
Is that Martinson?
Yes, I believe that's that's the school.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, I move, Steve, you got any questions or comments on this?
No, thank you.
Trish?
No.
Okay. I move that the board vote to approve the proposed building permit fee waivers for the proposed work at the properties known as in numbered eight twenty four Maraine Street, two hundred Joseph Drive Back Way and one sixty seven Forest Street, which are all town projects and properties. Do I have a second?
Second.
Aye.
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 Number twelve, discussion and vote on appointment of official playground inspector. Okay. So Andrew, you sent that a letter, October thirty first, twenty twenty five, I guess, giving a brief overview in regards to it. So you wanna give, you wanna give some of that overview or any thoughts?
Certainly.
You have on it?
The, so the idea of having an in-house playground inspector kind of came about as part of the discussions on accessibility and playground safety with our school playgrounds and town playgrounds as part of all the meetings that we had this summer. And the discussion came about as part of the overall idea of maintaining, inspecting, keeping up on these things. The town had paid, I believe, Real and Associates, I think fifteen thousand dollars last year to do the safety assessment. And then I followed up with the handicap accessibility assessment that I did. In response, now we've got all the CPC funding, we've been making improvements on all the playgrounds. But the idea is we wanna maintain it. We wanna make sure that we have regular inspections of the playgrounds, not just once a year, but multiple times a year so that we're making sure that the playgrounds are being kept up with the seasons and with use. So the idea of having an in-house playground inspector was brought up instead of the town constantly outsourcing, you know, fifteen thousand dollars a clip at somebody to to come and do an inspection. So we started to look at what that entailed to be a certified playground safety inspector. And it does take, you know, some a little bit of classwork, some training and some examinations. But it's not, you know, impossible, and it's budgetarily, I think it's within a thousand dollars of 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 training and testing. I already purchased some of the books, you know, because a lot, you know, inherently being part of this and being an inspector already, I was kind of the logical choice to to push forward to do that. So I said I'd be willing to do it. However, doesn't have to be the building commissioner. My idea really was that the select board should probably encourage the creation of a stipended position similar to the sealer of weights and measures or the CRS coordinator position, where it doesn't have to be the building inspector or the building commissioner. It can be anybody that's a certified playground safety inspector. And then they would just receive a yearly stipend to perform those inspections of the playgrounds, to give updates to the select board or the playground committee, and to request and to respond to requests for, let's say, to inspect damaged equipment and stuff like that, and provide the reports, organize the the custodial staff for the regular maintenance and that that type of thing. So I am happy to to do that. My caution was just, you know, putting it as a requirement or or naming the building commissioner to it. Obviously, I'm a union employee, so just adding stuff to my job description could be problematic, right? But I did talk to Sean Patterson from the DPW, and he said that that seventy five thousand dollars that was authorized at town meeting for the maintenance position for playgrounds, he said that their idea was to use that to fund the inspection of the playgrounds, at least until that permanent, you know, position can be created, maybe at next town meeting or something like that. So that's really the impetus between behind why we were thinking of having a position at all and also the reason why I was pretty much considered to do it. And I'm happy to to serve in that capacity.
All right, so so there's gonna be, I mean, what what is the process to become a playground inspector? Because you said that you got classwork, there's training, then you got tests to take. So what are we looking in that the whole, what is that whole process in regards to doing it? Does it take weeks, months? I mean.
You know, I could probably take the test tomorrow and see how I do, right? You know, and 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 if I pass it, then I'd become a certified playground safety inspector.
So it's an online test, right?
There are, yeah, there are in-person and online tests. It's, you know, there's also inline, in-person and online trainings. There's, you know, books that you can purchase for for training. There's all any number of of pathways that that we can take as far as that goes. What I would recommend or what I was thinking was looking into was a online training course and then to purchase the examination and take it at Bridgewater State University. They have a testing center there.
All right. Now, is this something that you're looking at the town to pay for? Is this something that you're you're gonna fund?
No, it would be that the town would be paying for it, yeah. It's a town position, so.
No, no, I get. All right, so you mentioned that you're you're within the union, the whole thing is that, am I under the impression that this is something that you cannot add on to your your position? Is this separate or?
You have to bargain.
Yeah, I I mean, I would have a grievance if it was added to my position, yeah.
Well, I mean, yeah, no, I'm saying he's one, that's what I'm saying. It's like, it was brought forward by Andrew, so I'm just trying to figure out how we're gonna navigate this in regards to putting this forward.
I think he has a solution in place where you create a stipend for whoever is named the playground inspector. So that's kind of the workaround, right? I mean.
Is it a workaround? That's the whole thing.
Well, I just wanna be clear too. I I did not bring this forward. This was the the playground committee brought this forward. This was their suggestion. This is they want this position. This was not something that I've said I will do this and I'm wanna do this and pay me at all.
All right, oh, no, no.
I'm offering to serve in this capacity for the position that the playground committee wants to have.
No, exactly. I'm going I'm going back to our last playground committee, I think we had it, and I and I thought it was you, because I thought you brought up saying that something that you would be the playground inspector, if I remember correctly, in that meeting. So I thought this was you. I didn't know it was the playground committee that that submitted this. So my apologies in regards to it. So I mean, how are we gonna appoint? I mean, Andrew can't be the unless we negotiate, right? I don't know when this contract, well, actually, it won't be up till next year. But so, I mean, we got this in front of us. What are we gonna do here? I think we're kind of in limbo, in my opinion.
I think you should table it for tonight.
Yeah.
I think that give me a chance to work with Danielle and, of course, Andrew and possibly the union, but let let me at least give me a little bit of time to sort of figure out a pathway. Now, I think this is interesting, and I think it makes a lot of sense. I like the stipend idea. A lot of towns do that for sealer of weights and measures and all kinds of things. But let let give us a little bit of time to make sure we do this properly.
No, no, that's what I'm that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, so I think we should table it for tonight.
You know, we just got, I thought it was Andrew was presenting this, now I'm finding out it was the playground committee.
I thought it was Steven, so.
Actually, was it you?
Yeah, it was me, yeah.
No, it was.
So what do I know?
Playground committee.
Yes, I'm the liaison to the playground committee, and the age-related steering committee.
No, 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 I remember the email, I remember the email, I remember the email coming in now, that's right, I forgot about that. But the whole thing is, I do remember, I think Andrew brought it up at our last meeting, so...
Yes.
Yes, that's right, you did bring it forward, yeah.
And Commissioner Jordan had reached out as well, saying, you know, this would be, it makes sense to, you know, create and fill...
I, I always, I always looked at that, it was something Andrew was chasing down, so obviously, that's not the case. It's just that, you can't do it right now.
It was all, all good intentions?
Yes, yeah.
No, 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 there's nothing wrong with it, absolutely good intentions, it's just, all right, we just need a further discussion on it, that's all.
Right, it was, yes, it was, it was my email request to put it on the agenda, so we'll just make sure that we don't hit any technical trip wires, and that we just do it the right way, you know?
All right. So I think that wraps everything up, if I am correct, besides the executive session, and...
Oh, yeah.
Well, don't we have to vote to table something?
I think you can just take no action.
Just, okay, no action.
Yeah, no, I, I'm not gonna take any action, no.
Sounds good to me.
No, we can, we can work out the details, we can bring it back, and then, and then figure it out from there, so...
But I like it.
All right, so I don't have to, I don't end this meeting, I just, I just roll into executive session, am I correct on that?
Yeah, you don't have to adj, you, you're gonna adjourn from executive session, so...
Yeah.
That's not in your motion, so at the end of your motion, just add on and to adjourn from, this meeting from executive session.
Sorry, too much whispering.
Okay. I move that the board votes enter executive session to discuss strategy with respect to imminent litigation, where an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body and the chair, so declared pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty-one A. Three, to wit, name, property, address withheld, and we will adjourn from executive session. Do I have a second?
Second.
Aye?
Aye.
Roll call vote, just make sure you do that roll.
Oh, roll call, Eric Kelly, aye?
Steve Bashi, aye.
Patricia Simpson, aye.
Thank you.